Welcome, everybody, to the November 19, 2024 meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forums are located at the back of the chambers. The Commission utilizes speaker request forums. If you'd like to speak on an item, please complete the speaker request form located at the bookshelf in the back of the chambers and return it to the Commission Manager, Holly Hennies, located on the lower right side of the dais. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order, and I'd ask Commissioner Lassiter to do the moment of silent reflection and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lassiter. At this time, this brings us up to review and approval of the agenda. The only thing I'd like to note on this is with the given number of speakers that we're going to have and the number of concerns we've received the last couple of days on Item 11, I'd request that we do a three-minute speaker request. Any comment from the Commission before? I'd like to add that to acceptance of the review and approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
As I've said in the past before, I don't tend to like to limit those to three minutes. I understand that there's probably a lot of people in here for a particular item today, but I still don't like necessarily to limit that, but that's just my personal opinion.
I agree, but I think also when we get up to Item 11, what I'd like to do is hear from staff and all Debs and so forth and get a motion on the floor so the speakers know what they're talking, addressing to.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I would make a motion to approve the agenda and to limit the speaking to three minutes.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion fails.
Chair, may I speak?
Yes.
I think most people just want to say they're for the moratorium. I don't think we're going to have a big speaking group. Some have been more involved than others, but the main thing is they want their voice heard today, so that's why I didn't do the three minutes if it was something that we've heard from people over and over again. The only place that their voice has been heard so far is at the Planning Commission, so that's why I didn't vote for that today.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved and approved. To approve the agenda, any further discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us up to consent agenda, and I'll recognize Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: Approval of the minutes from the special meeting of November 6, 2024; Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of November 6, 2024; Approval of the minutes from the special meeting of November 9, 2024; To authorize the Chair's signature on the warrant of appointment for Highway Superintendent Joseph Miller for a two-year term; Item E is to approve the abatement applications for tax year 2023 for Prairie Acres; Parcels 8002248 in the amount of $71.06 and parcel 8009961 in the amount of $44. Item F is approval of the 2025 memorandum of understanding between SDSU Extension and Pennington County for the 4-H program. Item G is to extend Western Sky Vacation Homes LLC adoption of Deerfield Road west to the intersection of Slate Prairie Road in the Adopt-A-Highway program. Item H is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of October 2024. And finally, item I is to authorize the Auditor's Office to issue payment to the $1 million donation received from the Leona M. and Harry B. Helmsley Charitable Trust to West River Mental Health designated for the Pivot Point operations.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, at this time, is there any Commissioners who wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Any from the public? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us up to items from the Auditor. Now recognize Cindy Muller.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. I have a few alcohol beverage license renewals before you this morning. Item number eight is the renewal of the retail on-off sale Wine Insider licenses for Dollar General Store #15207 and Summer Creek Inn.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the renewals of the retail on-off sale Wine Insider licenses and releases upon payment of appropriate property taxes for the following: Dollar General Store #15207 and Summer Creek Inn.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Lassiter. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item B is the renewal retail on-off sale liquor licenses with Sunday sales for Central State Fair, Mount Rushmore National Memorial, Sally O'Malley's Pub and Casino, and Sweet Grass Inn Shipwreck's Bar and Grill.
Is there any questions for Cindy? We go to the Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the renewals of the retail on-off, on-sale liquor and Sunday sales licenses and release the licenses upon payment of appropriate property taxes for the following: Central State Fair, Mount Rushmore National Memorial, Sally O'Malley's Pub and Casino, Sweet Grass Inn Shipwreck's Bar and Grill.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Hagcock. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item C is a renewal of the package off-sale liquor license for Johnson Siting General Store. We'd ask approval of that.
Any questions for Cindy? We go to the Board.
Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Move to approve the renewal of the package off-sale liquor license and release upon payment of appropriate property taxes for the Johnson Siting General Store.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're a little early.
We're a little early for our 9:15 public hearing, yes, sir. Move to table number 6D.
Let's move to table 6D. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll bring you back up. Next, that brings us up to item number seven from Buildings and Grounds, and I'll recognize Davis Purcell.
Good morning, Commissioners. Davis Purcell, Buildings and Grounds Director for Pennington County. The first item I have here is pretty routine. We're seeking a request to advertise and bid for the public safety building roof replacement. It's showing significant signs of deterioration. We also do not have a vapor barrier currently under the existing roof, which has led to many issues of leaking and getting air trapped, and other items like that. So again, it's a complete ripoff, replaced with insulation vapor barrier and then a 60-millimeter PVC membrane. This will come from the Buildings and Grounds Capital Improvement Fund for 2025.
Ms. Hagcock.
Is that that rubber membrane stuff that's on the top?
Correct.
Yeah, we've been having a little bit of problems with ours as well, so thank you. I'll move approval.
Move for approval by Hagcock, seconded by Lassiter.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So Davis, is this the original roof?
It is, yes.
So what's the age of that?
Roughly, I don't know, but I know it's over 20 years old at this point, so, yep.
Is there any further questions? Do you have a motion on the floor or any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next item is another request to advertise and bid for the Juvenile Services Center parking lot replacement. This is also, currently there is asphalt. The asphalt is having significant deterioration along with the subbase. There's a lot of potholes. We've tried patching it. We've tried other items like that to fix it, and it's just not, not working out. And so what we're, what we're proposing here is to go back with a six-inch reinforced concrete parking lot. It is just for the main parking lot that is in front of the building, nothing that goes back on the backside of the building, as that asphalt is in really good shape still. This will also address some issues we've been having with the parking lot lights. Because the asphalt is deteriorating, we've had some water damage to the conduit that runs out to the parking lot light poles, so we'll be replacing all that conduit as well as a few of those parking lot lights. So again, this will come out of 20, we're anticipating it, getting it done next year in the 2025 calendar year, and it will come out of the Buildings and Grounds Capital Improvement Fund.
Sorry, questions?
Here.
Ms. Hagcock.
This is the one that you had to take some of the money from this year, put it into next year for your funding, so you could actually do this roof, if I'm correct?
So we actually didn't move any money or supplement any money for this. When I came for my budget hearing, we added $200,000 to the Capital Improvement Fund, so it took it from $800,000 now to a million.
Yep.
We're estimating the cost of this between $400,000 and $500,000. We're hoping it comes in lower than that. That way, we can do this in one phase rather than two phases. So it'll just, once we get the bids back, it'll determine if, actually how it's spec right now is half of the parking lot is the project and then the other half is an altered it, so we can award both at the same time or just one depending on the price.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is there any further questions for Davis? Go to.
Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I have moved to authorize the Buildings and Grounds Department to advertise and receive bids for the JSC Parking Lot Replacement Project funded through the Buildings and Grounds Capital Improvement Fund with project completion expected by the end of 2025.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Any from the public? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next comes up, how much time do we have?
Still got like a minute.
We want to do this, do we want to do this item or table it?
I think we should go back to our tabled item and then we'll come back to this.
Okay.
So I'd look for a motion to take off the table 6D Budget Supplement Resolution SP 24-005.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Hagcock. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Chair, if we could leave, I have a question for Davis on this. Do we want to leave him up here or bring him back up? On one of the supplements of his?
All right, he's going to come back up right after this, after we do the supplements.
No, I meant I had a question on the supplement of one of his supplements.
God, go ahead.
It's nothing bad or anything, it's just a question. Okay, so on the Public Defender and Operation Building renovation at 964, Mr. Davis, is that the final number or is that just a supplement?
That is very close to the final number. So that is both discretionary spending amounts that I was awarded as well as the project that MAC was awarded for the public defender side of the building.
Okay.
So that is total, and that's, this is, this isn't final, but it's very, very close. We're ending the near, we're nearing the end of that project on MAC's side. There may be a few other small items that'll get added into there.
Okay, I just, I just remember we had a 1.5 budget or something in there and we said we were.
Yeah, we did. We estimated between 1.5 and 1.6, and we're still, it looks like 964,000 right now, so we're still under $1 million for that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Purcell.
Cindy, it is 916.
Okay.
You have the floor.
These are the annual budget supplements. We like to hold these until the end just to make sure that we're not doing unnecessary supplements, and so, yes, there are several of them on here. Would you like me to read them or does anyone have any specific questions on any of them?
Is there any specific questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
This is money we've already spent, right?
For the most part, yes.
So we just have to officially read it and that since it wasn't part of our 2024 budget, we're just having to basically allocate that all this came out of our 2024 budget monies? Is that really what the purpose of this is?
We're giving them the spending authority to go over what was approved in '24.
To go over what, but they've already spent it because?
Yes, in most cases, it's already been spent for, for certain projects. Some of them that you'll see, it was current year revenue, like on the COPS hiring grant and the COPS micro grant. That was from current year revenue, so we'll supplement both sides, the revenue and the expenditure side. Some of it is coming out of unassigned fund balance, some things that were kind of hard to budget for, like the court-appointed attorneys and court administration. Sometimes those things are a little bit hard for us to know what the courts are going to have going on throughout the year, so that's where you'll see the unassigned. We do have some that is coming from assigned fund balance, State's Attorney's Office. We had you set aside money for their software project, so that wasn't actually in their budget, so we'll be pulling that out of the assigned fund balance to supplement their budget for 2024. Does that answer your questions?
It answers most of my questions, thank you.
So Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So Cindy, these, these are expenditures that have all been previously approved. They're simply doing the supplement at this point in time of providing the funding for, for those.
Yes, the, some of them, like I said, with the restricted fund balance, those are monies that can only be used for those specific projects, and in October, when Sabrina sends out the memo to the departments, probably, actually, it's probably in September, so that we could get it posted, but we asked them to project their expenditures to the end of the year to see if they're going to need a supplement. So some of them, the money might not be spent, but with what happened throughout the year, in order to get through the year, they are going to need the additional funding.
Okay, thank you.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
So on the assigned, it doesn't mean you have to agree with it. I'll just tell you that because we might need to fund something else or that money can be used for something else. So because it's assigned, it's not restricted. Anything restricted on there, you can, you have to basically mandate it or we already, it's for grants and different stuff. So the assigned, if we needed to spend money or are low on money, then we'd have to take some of the assigned. You could do that, if I'm correct. The Human Services, what's the 124? Is that for a grant or something, or they're just short 120? That's on the first part, general fund from current year revenue. 101-0411.
Let me just refer to the memo from that.
Thank you.
Looks like the 120 is from current year revenue, and it was from the JTV donations and contributions.
So it was a contribution, not a supplement. And Natural Resources, I remember Mr. Guffey, and he strictly told us that, and he's been very frugal with his money, that he, we would probably be supplementing him at least 15 at the end of the year, so I'm good with that. On the cumulative, the capital project, the courthouse, I got that. Pass you. The TIF, the TIF number four and TIF number six, is that the TIFs that we added to the budget for 2025 that were paid off, or how did we do that?
Mr. Chair, if you may. When we are working through the budget for 20, when we were working through the budget for 2024, the mail levies were not set, so we don't know exactly what we're going to be collecting to pass on to those TIFs. So we end up having to do a supplement every year because we don't have a number to put in our budget at the time we're doing budget.
So the.
It's tax dollars that are going to be allocated to the TIF.
Okay, so these are, these are not money we're getting?
It is tax.
We're supplementing them until we?
It is tax dollars that we are collecting that are then passed on to the TIF.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that, Ms. Cindy.
Any further discussion? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the Budget Supplement Resolution SP 24-005 as presented.
Now, second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Cindy. That brings us back up to 7C, which is the revised jail tower project design and cost-saving measures. Again, I'll recognize Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds.
Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds for Pennington County. So I'm going to read a little bit from my memo here just to make it transparent and easy to understand what we're, what we're doing here. We were initially approved design fees for, to design the entire jail, which is a build out of every single housing floor and everything involved in what you see in this, in this option here, C2. Again, it was just approval of the design fees. What we're, what we're doing here is we're requesting the Board to provide further direction to BKV Group, who is the architect, to limit the design to construction documents for option C1. That, this total is $3,072,559. And the reason for this is we want to be fiscally responsible, and we know that bonding has not been secured for this project yet, and that's why we're looking at doing this. What, what these fees, what that $3 million fee will get us to is complete construction documents for option C1. C1, again, is two built-out housing floors, a mechanical level, and two Sheldon floors. So basically, what, what they would not be designing are housing floors, three and floor, three and four currently, but because we'll leave that, that motion on the floor where we awarded the design fees, we can do that later, but we can still come up to the Commission to ask for approval of that. So again, that's what we're looking at. So what this fee covers is construction documents for option C1. It excludes the bidding and construction administration fees. So those will come later because there's no need for us to actually do any of that until we have a bonding strategy or, or financing strategy to move forward with this. So I am seeking a motion to provide that direction, but again, we, we still have the original motion that we're not going to take off, which, which gives us that, the ability to kind of have them design it how we want to, but we want this direction here from the Commission, you know, because you guys are driving the bus with this project, so that's what we're looking at.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Davis, maybe I'm missing something, so let me ask the question, and maybe you can clarify it. Last meeting, y'all were approved the $5,481,816, is that correct?
Correct.
And you're telling me you want us to do a different motion, only give you approval to spend $3,072,559?
Correct.
Could you just not do that since you already got awarded it from the last meeting? Maybe I'm just kind of, I'm trying to understand why you're coming back and asking to reduce it when you actually have that power to reduce it.
We certainly can, but we want to make sure that the Commission is aware what we're doing and that we're being transparent, and, you know, there was a lot of, there was a lot of information at the last meeting. There was a lot of discussion about it, and we want to make sure that not only you guys, the Commission, but the public understands that we are not trying to spend all the design money upfront, and we understand that there's an impact, you know, for taxpayers if, if a bonding solution is figured out in the future. But right now, what we can do is basically just limit the direction that we're giving to BKV to only design up to a certain point. So yes, I have the ability to do that, but I want to make sure that the Commission is driving the bus for this project, and that's why I'm up here.
I'll wait for right now. Let me gather my thoughts, I just.
And I, I understand what you're saying, Travis, because at the last meeting, what we should have done is, you know, we approved C1, C2, some, some of those are on those lines, right after we approved the funding to do the full build-out. So I think that it makes sense that that's what they designed for, is what the Commission is trying to.
Right, I, I understand designing to that. They've got, I guess where I got confused right now, why we're asking for it to change rather than him just changing and maybe giving us a brief what he's doing, because, you know, I still may disagree with it. So even though I may vote against this here, then it looks like, well, why didn't you want to bring it down? Well, that's, you know, part of the reason why I'm, I know we need a new jail, I know we need to work, but I think it was mentioned a lot last time, I want to see some collaboration. We're going to have other entities utilizing this jail. Obviously, we have the, the marshals that the sheriff talked about. Custer County and Fall River County, they utilize the jail. You know, it'd be nice to see all the entities that have stake in this, you know, the tribes or whatever, anybody who's around the area, come together and help fund this and so it's not solely on the backs of the Pennington County taxpayers. That's, I guess that's probably what everyone needs to hear, is that the taxpayers of Pennington County don't need to fund this. All the entities that want to be a part of it or that we're going to implement into it, they need to be a part of paying for this as well, and I, and I think maybe that message is not being heard. So I think it's great that we're going to bring down the, the total amount, and I, and my no is not that I'm, I disagree with bringing down the, the amount, I just, I think we should look at this, and I think we should get our partners before we move forward with some of this stuff, because there might be some, some good insight that could happen from some of our partners that are going to be involved in this. That's just my, my due sense. Thank you for the time, Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
So you got $3,072,559, but you also have the original design fee that's added to that, so you'll be spending $1,782, which brings your total to $4,84561 on this design fee, right, this time?
Correct.
Basically, so you are spending about $5 million on the design, and then if the bond passes or more funding sources come, then it could be revised with the other $1 million something, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's still at $5 million something. So here's my thoughts. I had sent our sheriff some funding sources that I got from a guy from Washington DC that said that there's a bunch of different areas that maybe we could get some grants and federal money, and, and I agree with Travis. I keep saying we don't have a tax problem here in Pennington County, we have a spending problem. We've showed that through some of our areas. In this, for me to be able, and I believe that we need a jail, do we need this big a jail? Do we need to move forward with a design at $5 million until we figure out a funding source? I'm not in favor of that. I'd like to see exactly what we're going to do, because I've been here 10 years in a project that was supposed to start at a certain amount, even if it was 40 million at this point, has went up to 168. So I've seen projects that were supposed to be 100 and some thousand go up to 450,000. So I know there's changes, there, there's things that happen, we already know. My roof that we just repaired could have cost us 450,000. My roof that we just repaired could've cost us four hundred and fifty thousand instead of a hundred. So I, I have that, but the changes have been so extreme on most of the projects that we've done. And I'll keep saying, this money that we have spent already for extra buildings, like the bank across the street and excessive wage increases, that could've been used. We have to figure out from our spending habits, what is the priority for Pennington County? Because I keep seeing the spending, but I don't see where the priority lists are. So, Mr. Davis, I am not in favor of this until we figure out some funding sources. Again, I'm not against doing the jail, I'd just like to see that it's not on the burden of the taxpayers doing a hundred and forty-eight million dollar bond. I also know that New Underwood needs a school, it needs a bond, and also the city of Rapid City School District needs a bond. We need to start thinking more of the taxpayers, and what their needs are, and how we can distribute this in a way that maybe it needs to be a two- or three- or four-year plan, where I know it takes a while to build, I get it, but we also gotta quit thinking that we can spend when they're saying stop. So that isn't your fault, you're, this is your job description to do this, Mr. Davis, and I appreciate it, and you do a good job at it. But again, we need to quit spending, and we need to think of the people that keep telling us legislators ran on it, commissioners ran on it, City Council School Board, that they were gonna help with this, this spending and the budgets, and try to work on the property taxes. I truly believe we don't need another funding source, we need to just quit spending. So this is part of it. Again, if we can get some other grants, some other areas, Travis is right, the reservations maybe, the, the other areas where the other jails and stuff are that use Pennington County, because I know we have really good compacts with JSC and other areas, maybe we can bring some of those numbers down and get us a jail, and also with the taxpayers, save them some money on trying to see how innovative we are.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So Davis, I don't, I don't think you need this motion authorizing this. I think you, you have the authority to move forward on the jail project for design, and you can control that spending within those boundaries. So I'm not gonna support this motion either. Thank you.
If I could respond quick to a couple things. I do just wanna add a few items here that I was taking notes on. So I, I do agree, I think the financial burden needs to be spread out among other entities, and we have to work through that. But I also think that having a solidified project design and a project that we're confident that we can move forward with is also good to go to those people with, because if we go to them with nothing, and we design nothing to begin with, we're not providing any solutions. Here, we have a solution for added bed space and things that we know we need for the jail. And having a solidified project in place will get us at least more, we can have more accurate discussions and we can do things. And, and like I said, with this design, we've been, we've been provided sort of an à la carte menu, right? We have multiple options that we can still explore, but we also know based off of the bed space that's needed. If we don't set ourselves up, set ourselves up for future growth, we're only putting that burden on future generations. If we build one floor with a hundred and forty-eight beds, by the time that's built, we're coming right back to the table to say, how do we get more beds? How do we add more bed space? Again, all valid points from every commissioner, but I do think having some sort of a solidified design to move forward with will be able to refine those costs for the total project itself. So when we're, when we're talking to other entities that want or are, are willing to help with some of the financial aspects of this, we have something solid to present them.
I'll make a comment. Davis, and thanks for bringing that up, because in order to apply for grants, or even to go to other entities to see what we're gonna do, and we got to have a plan, no matter what you do. And that's one of the first things they ask, is what is the plan moving forward? What are gonna be the estimated costs, those type of things, in order to apply for those grants? So I totally agree with you. Although I, I, from what I hear from the board, I think I'm probably in agreement that I think we, the motion passed last time, and we probably don't need this. But we, I appreciate you guys looking back and reevaluating and being transparent and coming forward.
Chair.
Mr. Haggard.
So I agree you need a design, but the design has changed up to a hundred and sixty-eight million. It was for infrastructure when I first started here, and it's been like that for about ten years. Things change, I understand. Mechanical room needs to be changed, the infrastructure, then we were up to about sixty-five, then we needed more beds, we needed supposedly the population, but we don't base our stuff on population for jail, because that doesn't mean the population coming in is gonna be inmates. I've never seen that. I looked at Sioux Falls, different areas and stuff, and I just think at this point, a design doesn't need to be made like that, and what it's doing is scaring the heck out of people at a hundred and sixty-eight million, even if we don't do it. So I understood why you brought this forward today, and it was, it was commendable to try to say that we're doing less, but in the long run, you're still wanting to do the bond, and if the bond passes, you'll still bring it up to seven million. So again, before I decide to do a big design, before I decide to, to make my motels bigger, I have to have the funding source. I have to have somewhat of a funding source. We have thirty-seven million dollars, and five million's gonna go to the, now, to the design. We had a certain amount back in the day that we had used for, remember, one-time funding, different things like that? We spent that money on other priorities besides the jail, and I kept saying, quit spending it on other priorities, because, I'll keep saying, buildings and grounds and the jail have needed space for as long as I've been here, over ten years. But we just kept spending. And then we decided to do a new wage scale that also, every year took three to five to three, and ended up with sixteen million dollars. So that's why I'm saying, we have a spending habit. The jail was supposed to be a priority, now we have, what, thirty, well, we took five off, thirty-two million to build a jail. So where do we go from here? We have to have the infrastructure done, which is, what, sixty-five million?
It's, no, the infrastructure is quite a bit less than sixty-five million. I don't know what the actual number is there, but it's quite a bit less.
With the half-twos right now?
Uh, yeah, with, well, part of this project includes the infrastructure fixes to the jail. Any, any floor we touch in the original jail, we're gonna try to fix the infrastructure on. Now, to fix all of the infrastructure in the jail, it'd be nice, right, to have some additional bed space to move people over into a new facility, or whatever it may be, to clear out some of those cell blocks to do the rest of the infrastructure. But yes, correct, there's a lot of infrastructure in the main jail, and, and we're piecing it together on a daily basis, just trying to keep it running right now.
And I knew that before. So those things should've been done right away, and should've been approved right away, just to move forward. And then, in future needs, like everything else, we're having space needs supposedly, but I'm finding out that some of those space needs that we put in some of the buildings aren't big enough for some of the departments, and, and big, real big for the others. So bottom line is, if you're gonna have a plan, and you want a bond, I'll be up straight, being in politics, having that big a bond is gonna have a hard time going through with people trying to send us a message, and have trying to send us the message for the last two years of, we can't afford to keep doing this spending. So like I said, let's do the jail, let's get a plan. You said, if you do the design, we have to, you know, we have to get the design first. Well, I would, I would've done it in phases, to a certain extent. We already know we have to build the mechanic room bigger if we add on, we know the infrastructure needs to be done. I do the things I have to do in my buildings, and then I also think, how much money do I have for the future in this area? And if the growth is a hundred and forty-eight, what's that gonna be? Because I can see that if the jail needed to be done, and we need to be futuristic, then we should've not spent on the other areas, we should've made a priority on the jail. And then at that priority, based on all that, we could've moved forward, probably, and people would believe at that point that we need to spend a hundred and forty-eight million on a bond with the thirty-two with it. So politically, I think you're gonna have a hard time with the jail unless you get a bunch of funding sources, and that's all I'm asking. Get some funding sources, show people how much we really need it. Otherwise, I think with all the bonds going through, and all the people are, are tired of the spending. So how do we do it? I don't know. That's why I thought we had a committee to move forward with, instead of bringing this forward, talk to the committee and see where we need to go from here, because we haven't had a meeting for like two weeks, but we brought this forward too. So I would hope we could all meet, talk to the other entities. I know if someone has plans, you already know, if other entities, we know that from JSC, are planning that they need jails, or you can work out some kind of deal with them, they're gonna do that without a plan, meaning not with a, okay, so how much funding source do we have? How much can we build with what we have? How much are we gonna ask for after that? That's how I usually do it, I guess. I've never seen you come up with the plan and then say, this is what we're building, let's see how much funding sources we can get. That's my bottom line.
Thank you. I go to the board for a motion.
Chair, I question whether we even need a motion.
That's true.
We don't have the votes.
I don't think we need a motion yet, one from previous meetings, so I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Davis. Next up brings us up to item number eight, this is items from the Highway Department. Good night, Highway Superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. First item up for you here is our bridge inspection review. It's in the contract for our bridge engineer, K L J. So with that, I will invite Sean Mayfield up here to do his presentation.
Welcome, Sean.
Good morning, everyone. Sean Mayfield, K L J Engineering. Just a quick summary overview of our bridge inspections from this year. We inspected fifty-six bridges this year, and found that forty-three had no changes, which is good. Eight were actually improved, which included full reconstruction or some kind of in-depth preservation. And then five of those bridges had noted deficiencies, whether it be timber, erosion, or even load postings. But the main thing here is there were no critical findings, nothing that required a bridge to be closed or immediate action being done to it. I'll first talk about the bridges that were fully reconstructed, and there were five total, five, two bridges and three box culverts. Two of the bridges were on Thunderhead Falls Road, which you can see the one bridge right there. And then the three box culverts, I believe they're done, aren't they? Pretty close to being done now. Two on Paulson and one on Uther. In-depth preservation, completed repairs, were replacing deficient beams, repairing concrete or, and/or painting the steel. As you can see here, this is on Norris Peak Road. The beams were replaced, and the railings were painted, and it was put back. The abutments are original, and they were, any deteriorated concrete were patched and repaired as part of the project. There were three total that were done. So now we'll talk about noted deficiencies. This is Bridge seven twenty-eight, three forty-two in Owanka, and it had some severe erosion around the west abutment, as you can see in the photo here. The red line I drew is where the embankment, or the channel embankment, was originally constructed to, and you can see the, the channel has eroded that down. With this, it'll be monitored for changes, but the Highway Department actually has this completed now, correct? It's been repaired, and riprap and rock has been put in front of it to help protect The next bridge is on Thunderhead Falls Road, this is three twenty, three twelve, and as you can see, it has concrete deterioration, which has caused the bridge to be load-posted. And with this, we'll monitor for changes, and it is actually being submitted for Bridge Improvement Grant Funds to the state of South Dakota.
Sean, would that, would that been damage like from logs or something coming through there, or what causes that kind of damage on that concrete?
Mostly it's salt. Salt deteriorates the concrete, actually, and it starts to flake off. So those are original beams from nineteen seventy-two, so about fifty years of deterioration has caused that to start coming apart.
Okay, thank you.
This is Bridge nine eighty-three, three forty on Paulson Road, and this bridge was downgraded to poor condition. I'll back up. Bridges are rated on good, fair, and poor condition. And this one is, was in the fair condition, and now it's been downgraded to poor due to the deterioration of the timber piling. And you can see how the, at the water line there, how they've deteriorated, and they're starting to lose their strength. Just a summary of your structure inventory. Pennington County has a hundred and twenty-seven structures in total, a hundred and ten of those are bridges, seventeen are box culverts, and as I mentioned about good, fair, and poor, forty-seven are in good condition, seventy are in the fair condition, and ten are in the poor condition. So I'll just go through a few of good, fair, and poor. A bridge that's an example of good condition, this is on Bradsky Road, five hundred, three forty-seven. It was built in twenty eighteen and has new concrete beams and new steel abutments. An example of fair condition would be on Dark Canyon Road, three sixty, three sixty-one, three twenty-five. This is a concrete T-beam structure built in nineteen seventy-two that has some concrete delamination that's occurring with the beams. And finally, poor condition example is Bridge five ninety-two, ninety-one on Hundred Fifty-Ninth Avenue near Underwood. And this is an old timber structure that has been posted for load, and it has continued deteriorated piling, and the channels actually degraded as well. So we've moved this to a twelve-month inspection cycle. The standard inspection cycle is twenty-four months for any bridge, and that's mandated by the federal government. So we've moved this to twelve months just to keep a better eye on it, and it is scheduled for replacement. Finally, I just wanted to put together a slide on condition improvements that have been made, and Joe will talk a little bit about those.
So this is largely in part to the wheel tax that you all passed in, I believe it was twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, that Pennington County was able to upgrade our overall bridge conditions from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. So as you can see, in twenty nineteen, we had twenty-four bridges of our hundred and twenty-seven that were in poor condition. At the end of twenty twenty-four, we'll have ten, or seven point nine percent of our inventory in poor condition. So that's far less than the current South Dakota County average of twenty-three point seven percent. And again, that's largely in part to you guys passing that wheel tax in two thousand twenty or twenty-one, I don't remember the year, it kind of gets lost in the brain there. And then our staff for putting the plan together and putting a, a five-year plan together, along with Sean Mayfield's help, to get that condition rating back to where it needs to be, so.
So Joe, when you mentioned the wheel tax, would you had to kind of explain why, what that money goes for? As far as the big grant, too, it's a matching fund, that's the only way you can get those funds. The wheel tax alone's not gonna repair the bridges.
Say that won't...
The wheel tax alone would not repair that many.
No, so I think to date, the number between federal and state big-funded projects is around seven or eight million dollars that we've received from the state in the last five years. The wheel tax, or the, the big program was put in place in two thousand and fifteen when the, the state passed an increase in the excise tax of one percent, went from three percent to four percent. Pennington County at that time, later that year, elected to impose that wheel tax, it was then referred to a vote and was defeated. And for the, I believe it was about five years or six years, the Pennington County Highway Department operated about two and a half to two point eight million dollars short of what they had been operating on. And then, so with the passage of the wheel tax, it put about three and a half million dollars back into our budget. And with that three and a half million dollars, that's why we've been able to, to apply for those big grants and, and make strives towards improving this inventory, so.
Thank you.
Chair.
Mr. Haggard.
So how many bridges do we have in Pennington County?
A hundred and twenty-seven.
I knew it was, I was gonna say a hundred and seven, but I, I knew it had a seven in there. You've come a long ways, Joe, in fixing fourteen in the last few years, your Highway Department has been working hard.
years, your highway department has been working hard. Um, we have, uh, excellent, uh, engineers that, in our department, in the highway, and, uh, some really hard-working people there. So, um, I agree, um, with bringing this up. I think people need to see, um, the work you do. I don't know sometimes if they believe you're actually doing everything you say. I think that's just a government thing. It's not a Joe or a highway thing. So this proves it. Um, I like how you did your five-year plan. I like how you have the inspections and you bring all this stuff forward so people can understand what you do. So thank you, sir, for bringing this forward and Joe, just showing the, uh, constituents and us, um, what you do. So, thank you.
Any further comments? This is for informational only.
I'd just like to say thanks to our staff. Um, they're the ones that make this happen, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next up brings us up to item B. Joe.
All right. Item B is, uh, award recommendation for, uh, BRO eight eighty fifty-two, uh, PCN zero-nine RH for Old Hill City Road. Um, this is a structure on Old Hill City Road. This is actually a preservation grant that we received back, uh, I believe it was two years ago. Um, we are actually choosing to replace all of the double Ts on this structure. Um, the big grant or the portion of the grant is to replace the two inside beams. So, uh, if you look at the, the bid tabulation, there's seventy feet of, of double Ts and then there's a hundred and seventy feet. Um, there's actually a hundred and, that hundred and seventy feet of non-parti, is non-participating in the big grant. Um, so in order to preserve the, the structure for longer, um, we're choosing to upgrade all of the beams at once instead of having to pay another MOB in two or three years when the rest of the beams start to go bad. We're getting them all replaced at the same time, um, because today's dollars are, are far cheaper than next year's dollars or five years from now. So those double Ts aren't getting any cheaper. Um, so that's the, one of the reasons we chose to replace all of them. The other non-participating expense in this, uh, grant is, uh, the asphalt surfacing. So about ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars of that two hundred and sixty-six thousand is non-participating in the big grant. The rest of it will be at an eighty-twenty cost share with the, the big grant. Um, I don't remember off the top of my head. I forgot to look that up this morning, what the actual grant total was. So, um, this, this approach ensures that, uh, the structure is actually, the lifespan of the structure is extended, uh, by replacing that entire superstructure, so.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Uh, motion is requested toward BRO eight zero-five-two zero-zero-two-four-dash-three, PCN zero-nine RH, Bridge Preservation five-two-dash-three-one-four-dash-four-three-two to JV Bailey Company Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota, in amount of two six, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and fifteen ninety, continued upon the South Dakota Department of Transportation, concurrence.
Moved by Hancock, seconded by Drews. Is there any further discussion in public comment? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And now we're back up with Buildings and Grounds. Davis Purcell and Kevin Burton recommendations for justice sculpture from the Building Committee.
Hello again. Uh, Davis Purcell, Buildings and Grounds Director for Pennington County. Um, so what we have here, um, the Building Committee has reviewed a proposal from Lily Mendoza. Um, uh, she is the founder of the Red Ribbon Skirt Society. Um, and we're looking at permanently placing a commissioned sculpture titled "Justice" um, at our county admin building here, which will be the future, uh, Justice Center. Um, this initiative is supported by the Building Committee, uh, Sheriff's Office and State's Attorney's Office as well. Um, so I'll pull it up here and I'll let Lily kind of talk through it. Um...
Good morning. I'm Katie Urban with the State's Attorney's Office. Um, I'm gonna let Lily kind of discuss what this will look like, but, um, our office is certainly supportive of it as this building will be the future Justice Center, and we think this is really representative of a population that, um, you know, we work with a lot of the time. So, um, Lily, please, feel free to...
Welcome, Lily.
Good morning. Thank you for having me today. Um, my name is Lily Mendoza, um, originally from Shine River, um, enrolled a member over there. And, um, I've been in Rapid City, um, for forty years. And so I'm very invested in our community. I'm also invested in our state of South Dakota when it comes to justice and, uh, relations between our native and non-native communities as well. Um, I've raised my children here. I've raised my grandchildren and soon to be raising my great-grandchildren as well. Um, the Red Ribbon Skirt Society was founded by myself in two thousand and sixteen. So we've been doing this work for eight years. The thing that makes us different from other, um, missing and murdered indigenous groups across the United States is that we're constant. We continue to move forward. We're a, a group of women that volunteer towards this work. And, um, we, none of us get paid. We just are very committed to this crises, not only in our community and our state, but across the United States and beyond. And I'm not quite sure if, if y'all know about missing and murdered indigenous women. I'm sure all of you have heard about it. Um, and we're just not talking about missing and murdered indigenous women. We're talking about missing and murdered indigenous relatives, missing and murdered relatives. And so we've gotten to that point where we're just not, we're just not talking and providing education and awareness for MMIW, but it goes beyond that. It goes beyond that and violence against women, violence also against men. And so that's, that's where we stand with this. And, you know, eight years ago, um, we were thinking about what can we do to have a impactful presence in our community and in the state so that people can visually see, um, what this, um, crisis is about. And, um, so just over the last couple of years, we thought, let's, let's figure out, let's do a statue. And so we were able to commission a Lakota woman artist, um, who grew up in, in, in South Dakota, lives in New York. And, um, so we did commission her and she was able to do a, a small scale, uh, of the sculpture. And, um, so we aren't asking for any money from Pennington County. We will raise that money on our own, um, because we really feel that, um, or I really feel that it has to come from individuals within our community that are really gonna be vested in this as well. And when they talked about opening up the Justice Center, we had named her Justice before that. And it was just the obvious thing for us to do is to have her here in our community. Um, so people can really go not only from our, from Pennington, but from South Dakota. We will be the only ones in the United States that has something like this that is committed to the cause. And I say United States, I can also say the world. Okay? Um, I spent a lot of time doing research. And when we came up with this, it's just not like a random thing, let's do a statue. Okay? I have experience in this area. Um, you know, I was part of the building of the Journey Museum. I've done other sculpture projects, helped with those, um, here in Pennington County. Um, so I've, I've been in the world of art for quite some time. And, um, so like I said, we would go ahead and raise some money for this and, um, have our sculptress work with Pennington County to, to, to make this happen. I think that it's very critical that people in our community understand that we're trying to work together as native and non-natives in our community. Um, and it's, it's kind of, I see all these cowboy hats out here. Um, so I think it's really, I mean, I grew up around cowboy hats on the Shine River. It's like, all right. Um, and, um, so I think it will really bring back and give a sense of we are working together as a community, as a state, um, for justice for our people. So that's, that's where this is.
Thank you, Lily. Is there any questions, Ms. Hancock?
Chair. I like the idea because it's violence against men and women. It just doesn't represent the native people, even though it's a Native American woman. I think the sculpture is beautiful. I think because you're fundraising and you're actually bringing your cause to life and having people see in our community why you're doing it and what you're doing it for. Like you said, it's not just for the native community, it's for all people. So, um, I think it's beautiful. I've seen many sculptures downtown. I've seen them, um, by Chamberlain, uh, different areas. Um, they're beautiful. And this represents, um, people, not just Native American people, even if it's a Native American person. So you're doing it for the right reasons and for the right people, meaning, uh, men and women that you believe when violence comes in a way that's not, um, justifiable is a good way for it, or is, is, um, not a good thing. Um, I totally believe in this. So thank you for coming and I think it's pretty cool.
When I go out and speak on this, I always say, South Dakota has dignity, now we'll have justice.
That's a good, good saying, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Mendoza, for bringing this forward.
I was just gonna add too, um, we in the last year have held a number of events, um, on the front lawn. We added a park bench and a tree, and this will probably be in that same area. And so we're excited to be able to invite the community in more. We had a night of remembrance that was really successful, um, and a dedication this year. And so just having a space for people, um, who have lost someone or who are impacted by violent crime is really meaningful. And I'm glad that we would be able to represent that here.
So one more thing. Um, the jingle dress, why, could you tell the audience, because they probably don't know, the jingle dress and the red represents what?
The jingle dress and the jingle dance is really, it represents healing. Um, and it came down from the Jibways, um, into South Dakota. So if you go to Apawal, you're always gonna see jingle dancers. But it's really about healing, you know? So I think, I really, I really believe that this is what our communities need and our state also needs to, you know?
And the red?
And the red. Red, our tradition is, red is, is the color that spirits can see.
There you go. So two things, um, and that's why I said for you to tell what those mean because then people understand when they're talking about all people. Um, it's about healing and, um, what the red means. So, um, I appreciate that. I think it'll make a difference for people when they know that in their community as well, when we say it's about all people. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Drews.
So, Ms. Mendoza.
Yes.
On behalf of you and your society, you've been a, really a bright star, uh, for our community and our state. Thank you for what you've done.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll make the comment. I've attended one of your meetings by accident. It was, it was at the Holiday Inn and I walked in and for something else, but you guys had a great following. And I was at your dedication ceremony with the bench and you guys did outstanding work. You know, and I, I just like to reflect on our community, how far we've come in relations.
Right.
With both native and non-native. I mean, uh, it's just outstanding that the, the change has happened in thirty years. I've lived here all my life and I think, I've, I've seen the growth and I've seen the culture expand and the artwork just shine more and the culture being shared more now than ever before. And, and there's great respect in the community for the culture. And I love the way that you guys are describing that we're all relatives and it's for everybody. And we're respecting all cultures and I really appreciate that, all your hard work, Lily.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
This is just informational today. It'll be on our agenda for approval in two weeks.
Yep. If I could, uh, just talk about the location of the statue here. Um, so this, I should have taken the word concourse off here because this is not related to nine hundred concourse, the new county admin building. This is the lobby, um, of our current admin building. When you walk in, sort of, you know, you have register of deeds, planning and zoning, and then to your right, um, would be, uh, the treasurer's office. Uh, but long story short, you know, we were thinking of sticking at the end of the hallway where those windows are.
Yeah.
Um, but going forward, it's not going to be the best location, um, especially if we want a lot of people to see it. Uh, we're gonna have a lot less foot traffic in the county admin building once the administration offices move out to concourse, to nine hundred concourse. So, um, Joan, if you could go to the next view. So I highlighted an area in red that's behind the flagpole there, and, uh, it's, it's right off of the corner of the stairs. So, um, I did a walk, um, with, uh, Kevin Burton, the construction manager, uh, for Buildings and Grounds, and we were trying to figure out where's the best location and where, where is it gonna get the best view? Um, yep, right there. And so when you stand up at that corner, um, it's right next to a bench. One of those benches would have to be removed. We'd still maintain, um, one for sitting next to it. Um, but what's really great is when you stand in that corner, any direction you look, it's actually, it's, it's a little bit higher than Kansas City Street as well, um, that runs adjacent. And you can see it from any angle, whether you're driving down, whether you come in the parking lot, whether you're walking up to the doors there. I also think it'll, uh, be a great location if people want to take pictures with it and things like that. Um, and it's very, like I said, easy, um, to see. And again, with this being the new Justice Center, I think that entrance there, that, that's, that's the main entrance. Um, it's gonna get a lot of, of notice there. Um, again, this is what we would recommend as the Building Committee. We can always, if there's other alternative site locations you guys want to explore, we certainly can. Um, we don't necessarily have to include that in the motion on where it's going next time, um, but we would like to at least get something figured out. Um, another thing here is, you know, we do have to think about snow removal and things like that. We thought about sticking it kind of, um, at the bottom of the stairs, uh, where the corner comes together for the stairs or right on top, but it would just, it would, it would probably get banged up a little bit. And, um, what we could do is elevate it on a pad, on a concrete pad in that location as well. So it's up off the ground, six to eight inches, um, or up off the, the ground of the, of the concrete surrounding it. Therefore, it will not get damaged either. Um, and it also leaves some space for, um, if we, if, if a plaque is gonna get added to it as well to talk about the, the statue itself. There's a lot of space in that area, so.
Chair, can I ask one question?
Ms. Hancock.
The only thing I'd worry about is exposure or damage that other people could do to it. So, um, if it's in a building, it's more likely not to be tampered with or the exposure of the weather. So, and I don't know if there's something you can put around it or whatever, but...
Yep. So the components that it'll be constructed with will be for exterior purposes. So it does not need to be covered up. Um, we would have to, I think they would have to touch up the paint. Um, let me see here. Um, yeah, there would be some paint touch-ups needed every five to ten years. And then obviously a, a sealer would have to be put on it periodically. Not sure how often that would be. Uh, but when we talked, I believe, um, I don't know who talked to the sculptor or whoever, but they did say exterior is, i- i- in you, in the proposal here, you can see that it can be put interior or exterior. Now, as far as, um, being vandalized, you know, that, that, yes, it could happen because there's really, we wouldn't want to really enclose it by any means. Um, so, um, that, that is something that could happen. But maybe in that location, it's kind of out of the, you know, it's not, it's not right on a downtown corner either or something like that. So maybe it'd be less prone to that as well, but...
Just a thought.
Yeah. And, um, you know, I will include, um, as I raise money, um, you know, for maintenance of it, you know, as well. Um, and then, you know, the, the thing is, is that when we've done, you know, hanging red dresses or, um, out in the middle of nowhere or at the Journey Museum, nobody messes with them. Okay? Because they're really seen as sacred.
Yeah.
And, um, people really watch out. You know, we've, over the last eight years, we haven't had any incidences of anybody vandalizing any sort of, um, thing we've done out there.
Good.
You know, so.
Is there any further questions? Well, thank you, Lily and Davis.
Yep. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Head to the next meeting. Next up brings us up to item ten, which is speaker, uh, items from public, STCL one twenty-five dash one. These are speaker request forms. As required, it's a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the Board of Commission on Policies and Issues Affecting County Government and Its Functions. Action will not be taken during this section on any issues forth and not properly noticed. Speakers under this section will be recorded in the minutes by name and area of interest. This time, do I have any public requests?
Mr. Chair, we do have two speaker request forms that are not filled out to indicate what area they want to speak on. So I don't want to make an incorrect assumption, um, and miss their opportunity from items from the public if that's what they wished for. Um, first one is Veronica Edoff. Moratorium, okay. And then Mr. Paul from Owanka. I apologize, I can't read your last name.
Moratorium.
Moratorium, okay. Thank you. So no, Mr. Chair, you do not have any items from the public.
Okay. So that'll bring us up to item eleven, and this was added to the agenda by Commissioner Deb Hagcock, so I will give her the floor.
Thank you. Actually, with help from, uh, the incoming commissioner, Jerry Durr, also recommended this, so... Actually, with help from the incoming commissioner, Jerry Durr also recommended this, so, and Commissioner Lassiter, so this was from all three, even though my name, I worked with the Planning Commission on this. The other two incoming commissioners, Commissioner Lassiter brought this forward with me to give them credit for this as well. Why that is, is because we were all at the Planning Commission many times. We went to tours of the land where the new one, wind and solar, is going to be. And at first, I'm thinking, when I visited the first Wild Springs, I'm like, what's the big deal? There's just some panels, they're, you know, doing some energy, and then you started looking into it a little bit more, a little bit more, and then you're like, holy cow, we missed some of the boat when we did the ordinance and we pulled it forward. I was on the committee, and we did have people that liked and disliked wind and solar, and we liked, tried to figure out that ordinance of where it should go. We just missed a few areas, and now that they've been in the areas, eastern part of South Dakota and different areas, then we started realizing, okay, we've missed some of the areas that we need to put down and look at for public health, safety, and welfare. So, with all the group in this room, everybody in Underwood and Wall called me and said, Deb, we gotta do something. They called Jerry, Jerry's been involved, Travis, and said, you guys, we need to do something about this. We don't want our landscape to be all panels and wind turbines. Okay, so, here we are today, and now we wanna take a closer look, and that's why this was brought forward, commissioners, is to take a closer look at maybe some of the things we have missed in those areas we have went through. Thank you, Tyler. Thank you, Brittany and Jason, who took the tour with four cowboys that almost threw me over the edge of Mater Point, I call it, but it's not called that. Took a four-hour tour, and I'm gonna say this on behalf of Jason, because he's like, that's the best tour I ever went. And it was amazing just to learn all the different areas and just the past history on some of the land and stuff that we decide that we would like to put wind and solar, or take away some of the ags. So, that made a huge difference for, I believe, Jason, I'm gonna speak for Jason, and me, just seeing what we had missed on some of the areas. So, thank you all for your time today. I know you have things to do, you're caving and doing some stuff, but this means a lot to you, and it means a lot to your commissioners, I believe up here, not just us three. And they also, I think, have a lot to say about, and Mr. Drews actually, at the Planning Commission, had a lot to say on this as well. So, thank you for your support. If we could move this forward, I'd like to be the chair of that committee and then get people to look at different areas with Brittany and Tyler, and just kinda see where we can go from here. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
For a little clarification before, what I'll do is, Ms. Hagcock's name was on the list, I was bringing it forward, but what I'll do is, she had the floor, I'll give you the floor, and I'll give Jerry the floor. I do have, then I'd like to get a motion on the floor from the commission, so when I go to the speakers, the public, that you know what you're speaking on. We do have 27 speaker request forms, and I did receive the petition that was filled out, so I just wanted to give you guys the respect that, to know where we're at, but I'll give those three the floor to be able to present, and I'll ask for a motion, so then you guys know what you're talking, you know, what's on the floor.
Can I borrow a quick moment of your time, Mr. Chair, just as it pertains to the motion that will be put on the floor? So, Jay and I talked about the 718AA, which is cited in the resolution therein, and we, you know, we talked about when this would be.
Oh, you need to identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, Tyler Sobzak, State Attorney's Office. And we've come to the, you know, determination that instead of it being effective today, it should be effective upon publication. So, just for the purposes of your motion, it should be stated something along those lines, and then we can edit the resolution accordingly. So, that's the only housekeeping matter I have.
Okay.
Any questions about that?
I don't. And anybody else?
So, it'd be take effect immediately upon?
Publication.
Publication.
Yes.
Is the only change on that?
I think that's the 11th and 12th.
Okay.
Okay. Publication should be good. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. So, that's how we'll roll. You know, like I said, there's 27 speaker request forms, and I just hope that everybody's respectful of everybody else's time, but I will give those three the floor before I go to public comment. With that being said, Mr. Lassiter.
Mr. Chair, I just wanna make a couple of comments on this as well. Many of the individuals in the room also called me when Wild Springs was coming online, and they were doing the construction, so I'm pretty involved with that, with all the complaints and everything that I saw as areas that the county may have missed or didn't quite understand when we drafted the ordinance on solar and wind power for the county. So, I think, once we had the very first one come in, I think now we have to really see how this is gonna play out for the county, so that's why I think this is very important to do right now, because there's some questions that need to be answered, there's some things that still need to be shored up. Last I knew, not every, what's the word I'm looking for? Every loose end hasn't been tied up yet. There's still some challenges with the Wild Springs area out there. So, I think it's important for us to take all those complaints in, evaluate them, and then make sure that we're moving forward with something that's appropriate for the community and for our county. So, that's the reason why I'm dedicated to supporting of this as well.
Okay. Mr. Drews, do you mind if I go to the rest of the commission, Mr. Drews and myself, before calling you up?
Drews over here, on the right.
Oh.
Is he looking for Jerry Mater?
No, I, just, I, when I gave out the rules, I said I'd do one, two, three, and I think a comment from each commissioner, and then call you up. Are you okay with that?
What?
Okay. Mr. Drews, do you have any comments?
I do, and then I actually have a question, too, but my comment is, is that this was brought before the Planning Commission about three weeks ago. Planning Commission did actually approve on a 42 vote, a conditional use permit. I was one of the two votes opposed to it, but I would like to ask explanation of the exact status. Since that action had taken place, what is the exact status at this point in time? And can we put a moratorium on something that's already been approved?
No.
No.
Grandfather did.
No.
Sorry. I answered.
So, I think everybody needs to know that.
Brittany?
We can't do that.
Yeah.
Commissioners, Brittany Molitor, Planning Director, it would not impact that particular request. It would impact any expansion that that request may have, but as it stands for the request that they had at the time, it was approved, so it wouldn't be retroactive to that approval.
Okay. Anything else? My only comment before going to Jerry is that I think this ordinance was put together, and I think Ms. Hagcock, you were a part of it during the mining one also. And so, many years ago, before we had a lot of this stuff happening, and a lot of things have changed, and that's one good thing about ordinances, is you can bring them back, work on them, and change them to what, as time changes and the needs change, and so this is probably a good time for that process. So, that's my comments on that. Now, I'll go to Mr. Durr, future commissioner.
Future.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jerry Durr. So, yeah, Gary, I appreciate your support at the zoning, or the planning board meeting where you voted to deny the conditional use permit. And so, there were some questions that came up, you know, during the planning, there were several meetings of the planning board to talk about this conditional use permit. And so, one of the things that did come up that I spoke to is a fact that I do support this moratorium, and the reason being is because in the county's ordinance right now, the way it stands, and in our comprehensive plan, and the zoning ordinance that allows a conditional use permit in an agricultural district, the permits are not limited. And so, it's open-ended, there is nothing, because again, the, you know, Wild Springs, Yarol Tech coming in on this property, and what it would indicate is that, you know, just like the gentleman that's proposing this project out of Florida, you know, conversation as to, why would you come to South Dakota? Why not initiate some of this stuff a little closer to home? And it's because of the lack of regulation. And so, the fact that we have put this in place, and basically, you know, we're open for business, but what you're gonna hear from the community members that live out there, to include myself, is we don't want the rural rolling plains of eastern Pennington County to be open to these projects. And right now, the reason for a moratorium is to pump the brakes on these and stop any further developments coming forth through a conditional use permit, until we can look at the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance that allows this, and the repercussions, and what the ultimate impact, you know, is down the road to our communities. And so, the other comment I would make related to this is, it was evident to me coming to the planning commission meetings, that, you know, one of the gentlemen at the last meeting, a couple of comments were made. One at the last meeting was, you know, we'll just approve the conditional use permit, and then it'll push it up to the commission, so the commission can have, you know, a decision in this, and the way it's written and the way the law is, that is a deciding factor. So, it does, once the conditional use permit is approved at that planning level, it's not a second approval by the commission. So, one of the members of that committee didn't understand that. Brittany explained it and said, no, if you approve this, you know, this is it. And secondarily, it was obvious to some of the comments coming forth from the planning commission, one of the gentlemen on the board from Hill City mentioned, you know, I was in your same shoes, where in, you know, we had a vacation home rental ordinance, and so, you know, we didn't want the vacation home rentals in our neighborhood, and I was against it. Now, I'm on the planning commission, now I kind of understand it. This is not just changing the use of a home to a vacation rental in another community. This is actually, you know, not even comparable, it is changing the use of the land in our community. And so, it has much a major impact than, you know, change of a residential use in a residential community. And the other thing that's evident from the planning commission, and the authority given, you know, through the board, the commission appoints the planning commission, is that we need some agricultural representation on that planning board. And so, when those positions come vacant in January, I would ask the commissioners that are still on the board, that we look, I'm sure we're gonna have some volunteers in the room that would like to serve on that board and have some ag representation when those vacancies come forward, so those are my comments.
Thanks, Jerry. Appreciate that. So, what we'll do is, I'm gonna go to the board for a motion on the moratorium. I think there's discussion about creating task force. I think we could add that to our next agenda, if that's okay? If that would give the public that's here time to, they can show their interest and watch it. If we can put that on our agenda.
By the first of the year.
Yeah, first of the.
Yeah, first of the year.
Well, we can put it on the agenda for, to approve the task force, but then you could get your interest, we put your name in.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, that's what I'll do. So, the motion on the floor would be strictly for the moratorium. Then I'll call it for public comment, to give you guys your opportunity to speak on, you'll know what you're speaking on, if that works for everybody.
You wanna read that, what it says, Lloyd?
Yeah, I'll read the, I'm gonna read what the moratorium says.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 741, temporary zoning ordinance regulating utility scale alternative energy in all Penton County zoning districts. The purpose of, purpose, the Penton County Board of Commissioners has determined there is a present need to study the impact of utility scale alternative energy systems in all Penton County zoning districts, in order to evaluate whether the current zoning regulation reasonably addresses concerns for public health, safety, and welfare. Whereas STCL 11-2-10 authorized the Board of Commissioners, in the interest of public health, safety, general welfare, to adopt temporary zoning controls for reasonable periods of time in order to study, identify, and consider necessary land use regulations. And now, therefore be ordained that the Penton County Board of Commission hereby authorize a one-year moratorium on the issuance of any new permits and our approval of land uses for proposed utility scale alternative energy systems, including both solar and wind energy systems, regulated under Section 317 of the Penton County zoning ordinance in all of Penton County zoning districts. The moratorium shall expire on November 18, 2025, unless otherwise extended by law, and it is further ordained by the Penton County Board of Commissioners, the provision, and adoption of this ordinance constitutes an emergency as contemplated in the STCL 11-2-10 and 7-18A and 8, and shall therefore take effect immediately upon approval.
Publication.
Publication.
Approval of publication. Okay.
Mr. Chair, Tyler's out double-checking that effective date right now, to make sure it is in compliance with statute.
And he's walking in.
Upon?
Is the publication date, because the 20 days is suspended because it's an emergency?
Okay, so it'll be December 12.
So, effective date of the ordinance that passed today would be December 12. That will be the completed publication date.
Okay.
Now, move approval.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Lassiter for approval, with the effective date changed to?
December 12.
December 12.
2024.
Okay. Any further discussion from the commission?
Just one more thing.
Oh, nope, sorry, I'm not gonna go to a vote.
Okay, don't have to go to a vote. Just, one thing I missed, there's three people I'd like to thank, because this would never have happened without them, Lindsey and Jerry Mater. Boy, you guys went out there and passed the word. You did your, Lindsey did the petition, other people in the audience did the petition. Thank you. You made a difference for your community. Sometimes you think government doesn't listen, now you know we do. Justin Yurig, you have been above and beyond as well. Thank you for all your work. This happens with a few people, and a lot that wanna make the difference in the end, but you gotta have some people that are gonna push it and fight it. Those guys wouldn't give up, kept saying, Deb, Travis, Jerry, come on, let's do something, let's get it done, let's get it done. And they were persistent, and it happened. So, this happened because your community stood together, and it shows today. So, those three, you can thank them, because they did the work, we just have to come up here and show them how it's done afterwards, to make sure that happens, what they were thinking. So, thank you for all your hard work, you guys.
Okay, before I go to the public comment, I just wanted to make note that we got the petitions, and this is quite a bit. Not only did we get emails and texts all weekend, we got them, I tried to answer them all, I may not have answered your phone, I even got them at 5:30 in the morning. So, I'm up, so that doesn't bother me. That's when I responded. So, I just wanted to bring that up to your guys' attention, that this commission has received all of that. And I think, thank you for all the hard work that's going out there, but I do wanna just make the comment that we do have 30 speaker request forms. Just ask that you maybe not repeat what the previous one has said, or something along those lines, but you do have a motion on the floor to support the moratorium, so I wanted to pass that on. So, with that, I'll go up to start the speaker request forms.
Can I interject really quickly? If we're changing the publication date to December 12, the.
Mr. Chair, can she come up?
Come on.
Just so that, we understand this is just a clarifying question.
Yes.
And identify yourself.
My name is Kristen Mitchell, I live in New Underwood, and I just was saying, since we are changing the publication date for this to go into effect to December 12, that the date that this ends should not be November 18 of next year, that it should be pushed to December 11 or 12, whatever the year term would be.
Yeah.
So, just clarifying. Good point.
Yeah, I would, where's Tyler?
Yeah, if we're gonna give it a one year.
Yeah, one year from the publication date, with the expiration would be then December 12 to 2025.
If that's the board's wishes, I can change the resolution. The approval date is just one year from when you approve it today.
Yeah.
Good.
Is how we typically do that. So, that's why it's a year from today's approval.
Okay.
Good point, though.
Thank you, Holly. Tyler, that's your approval? Okay. So, next, we'll go to the speaker request forms. As I said, I do have 30 of them, so, and I'm not always good, excuse me.
I'm Jerry Mater, I'm a neighbor to this proposed wind and solar site, and I think there's about 454 signatures on that petition.
Okay.
And I think in the interest of saving time, most of the speaker request forms are there just to support the moratorium. Some may wanna speak, and I don't wanna stop that if they wanna talk, but most of them probably won't come up, and I don't know if you do that by a show of hands, or how And I don't know if you do that by a show of hands or how you.
I don't know who each one is.
Yeah, okay.
Otherwise, I would definitely, I could, I think what I'll do is I'll read off the name and, and that person can say I defer.
Okay. And we did talk to them each about coming by the microphone and say, I support the moratorium too. So however you want to do it, I don't.
Or we could take, we could take a 10-minute break. You could have a discussion with your group and if you want to, uh, pick three people to speak or four, you guys could.
Yeah, I don't.
Do that real quick.
If you're going to support the moratorium, we may not even have to speak and take people's time, I guess. That's really what we wanted.
Let's just move forward.
That's why I wanted to press, press that forward. So.
Sure, I appreciate it.
I wanted to communicate that to you guys. We don't want to take up your whole day.
Yeah, well, sure, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
For your time and energy that it takes to do this.
Mr. Lassiter.
And if you don't mind me just interjecting, sometimes we have had it, uh, you know, I did it in the planning and zoning, uh, once or twice, and I do remember, um, with the fairgrounds, sometimes it's just, hey, who else here? Stand up. And if we give you the names, y'all can figure out who wants to speak and who doesn't. And then you just, and then that way it's easier for you as well. You don't have to worry about thumbing through all the names. You only know the three or four that really want to speak versus everybody saying we all support. There might be one out there that is not in support of it. I don't want to take that away from them either.
Sure.
But that way y'all can kind of coordinate that so we have an understanding. Does that make sense? And then it helps you get back to what you're doing and gives us a good representation.
Yes, try to save time for everybody, so.
So I guess what I'll do, that sounds like a good idea, is you guys all know who filled out a speaker request form and you know the motion on the floor and what's going forward. So those that would still like to speak, knowing that there's going to probably be a good number of you guys speaking on it anyhow, defer your time to them. Well, they can speak as long as they want anyhow. But if you'd still like to speak on this, please stand up and then I'll call you, your name and pull your speaker request form and give you, and go through that order. So, okay.
Look at those women stand up. Do you think we're going to be quiet today?
And, and please just yell out your name at me when I, when I say it. So I'll start with.
Florence Thompson.
You're one I emailed at 5:30 this morning.
Five thirty this morning, too.
I think that's when you got it because I was still sleeping.
Okay, give me a chance to go through these real quick. Are you got them? Okay. I'll go with, I'll start with, I'll start with Florence Thompson.
Can we hold your phone and tape you? Just kidding. I didn't hear that.
She said you wanted to hold your phone and she'll tape you.
Oh, okay, I could do that. Or I'll just hold it this way. It usually shoots up my nose, which is really gross. Anyway, my name is Florence Thompson. I live near Caputa and I've been testifying at some of these others. And I've been saying the same thing over and over. And you know, you hate somebody who says, I told you so. But I was asking them to please pause and wait until after this election because the whole funding situation could change radically. And lo and behold, Trump won. He's bringing in a big reform. There's going to be a lot of budget cutting. They have a department called the Department of Government Efficiency headed by Elon Musk and what is his name? Ravaswamy or whatever. And they're calling it Doge. I call it Dog E. But anyway, Dog E is going to be radically cutting programs and cutting the budgets. And these green energy programs are going to be on the chopping block. So I, I do think it's wise for the county to wait and see how this all shakes out because there's no use planning for something where there isn't going to be any money anyway. And that's only, the only thing that keeps these projects alive is the government subsidies. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Florence. Okay, now we went through the speaker request forms in order that they came in. So, uh, next on my list is Amber Christensen.
Amber Christensen from Rapid Valley. I'm a recent refugee from a wind farm. I moved from eastern South Dakota, the Cottington, Grant, and Dool area. I lived, I was surrounded by two wind farms. And I wanted the commission to be aware of, um, having the wind company, I, I don't know much about solar, but the wind company help, um, make your ordinances is, is a bad decision. They try really hard to keep the low frequency noise out of the ordinances and that is the real issue. My house burnt in December. I built a new one, moved into it in July, and in March I found out they were building wind farms by me. And after I moved into my new house, I got to live there for five years, but, um, it's the low pressure that really bothers you. I have people leave my home because they say, I, I can't be here. You get brain fog, you get head pressure, you get ear ringing, you don't sleep well. And that, that's the most important thing to me. And Tennessee in 2017 actually had a moratorium for a year. And after coming back, they have now one utility, uh, wind farm in their state because of what they learned. And, um, I hope that you learn a lot and that you'll do this moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Yep.
One more thing is if we do do a moratorium, which would be great, I have been corresponding with a state senator to get interbuner money for people who are affected by utility companies when they go to the PUC to fight for their rights for their property. Um, I was a interbuner twice. I spent my life savings, um, trying to protect my property. The state of South Dakota gave the utility company $13 million and gave me as a taxpayer zero to fight for my property. So having interbuner money so that we could be on a level playing field would be monstumental. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Next, Eileen Peterson.
This is the one you got to give three minutes. I'm teasing. I'm just, I'm teasing.
Eileen Peterson, resident of Rapid City, um, obviously in support of the moratorium, but in addition to wind turbines and solar panels, I would like you to consider studying battery storage, the lithium battery storage. There are two of these that are starting up on eastern part of the state and people are already saying what the H is going on now. So try to get ahead of that before it gets ahead of us. I applaud you for the moratorium saying alternative energy sources and not renewable because that's exactly what they are, alternative energy sources and money dumps. Uh, and when you come up with your committee or whatever it's going to be called, please, please have some of these people who have been working on this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Justin Yurig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning and for considering this moratorium. Um, was, with, with many of the neighbors and most of the people in the back of this room as we walked through this recent process with the Yaro Tech project. And, and we all saw Wild Springs after it was constructed. Um, I think the thing that most of us discovered is we wound up finding out a lot about solar and wind that we never realized we were going to find out this year after walking through this project. And we found that there was many counties and many states that have put in much stricter restrictions than what we have here in Pennington County because they learned the hard way. They learned that there is a lot of impacts, whether it is from the noise levels, um, there's a lot of counties that have put decibel measures in place, what they have to be at property boundaries, as well as much more strict setbacks as far as two backs, two miles and further on wind. And, and we would like to see our county do that. I mean, there's houses that got drastically impacted with the Wild Springs project where they had, you know, finally gotten their beautiful piece of property and now within 200 foot of their home is all these solar panels. Um, we shouldn't have to deal with that as the existing people in this county. I mean, they, we, we dealt with a scenario where you had an out-of-state company, an out-of-state landowner that are now coming in and dictating this last project. I understand this moratorium does not impact that project, but before something else like this happens, we'd strongly like you to vote in favor of this moratorium at this time so that we can dig into this better and realize the things that are changing and the things that the other counties have done. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin.
Mrs.
James Ellsworth.
Uh, I'm Jim Ellsworth and my wife, Jacey, is over there. We, uh, we live on the neighboring ranch to the east of the Shine River Ranch. And, uh, I would just kind of want to share a perspective, a young rancher in agriculture, agriculture today. And, uh, it's just many young people like myself, they're wanting to getting to farming, ranching, and it's, it's really difficult. And if you don't have a family or some way into it, it's almost impossible. And just pulling more land out of agriculture every day is, it's just making it harder, putting the squeeze on new producers and people in the future. And, uh, about 730,000 acres every year pulled out from agriculture and, uh, we just kind of like to put a hold on it for right now. So, uh, we're kind of in support of the moratorium. And, and another thing is I grew up south of, uh, Highmore, South Dakota, and in between us and Highmore, they, they started off with 27 wind towers. That went in 20 years ago probably. And that was just a toe hold in. And now there's over 100. And it just ruined the landscape, in my opinion. And, uh, I just don't want to see it happen out here. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Next, I have Tonti Weaver.
Morning, commissioners. Well, the last time I spoke to you was on the 3rd of, of October, and we went through the referred law 21, uh, section by section. And, uh, at the time, we didn't know what the fate of that piece of legislation would be, but now we do. And that's why I'm speaking to you as, uh, both myself and president of South Dakota Citizens for Liberty. Uh, the citizens of this state have spoken and they've spoken loudly. 65 out of 66 counties voted that piece of legislation down and they did it in, in grand fashion. So I think the wisdom of this moratorium is quite obvious that, that there is a dark side to solar. There is a very big downside to wind. Uh, a lot of people call these industries greenwashed. In other words, they are represented as beneficial to the environment, but they in fact are not. So I think all aspects of these, um, industrial projects need to be examined and we need to inform ourselves before we commit to something that, as Mrs. Thompson said, is, you know, subject to change. Uh, there is a new administration coming in, there will be new policies, uh, and, you know, and maybe even some new ideas that no one has thought of or brought forward yet because we are so invested in those two things. So I think this is a very wise decision on your part and I credit you with that. I also think that, um, that moving forward, it is important, um, you show prudence in bringing people from the agricultural community in. I will remind you that Pennington County has a lot of, um, that we rely on tourism and there are, there are many reasons, not the least of which are aesthetic reasons, to avoid these things. They have applications, but maybe we should look at where those applications make sense and where they don't. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tonti.
Tonti.
Hi, I'm Veronica Edoff and my address is Hermosa. So I live in Custer County, but our ranch is in Pennington and Custer County, so I do pay taxes in Pennington County also. I support this moratorium, but I do have a quick question. The moratorium will cover, will it cover state and federal ground also within Pennington County?
We can regulate it.
Because I know BLM is in the process of allowing these kinds of energy things on federal BLM ground that they have.
For Pennington County that we have control over.
Well, I'm just asking because there is federal ground within Pennington County and I just want to know and state ground that it would cover all of that ground and not just private ground.
I can get that for your.
I think Brittany was.
Brittany.
It's only for private land, Brittany. Brittany, Mr. Chair, Brittany is shaking her head.
That's something we all.
Federal land is federal land. They get, if they're the, whoever's in control of that, they don't come to us for the projects. They, they get their own thing.
Well, I just wanted to know, just to let the public know that too, that, that BLM is in the process of doing that. And so this moratorium, I think, is a good idea, but we need to still be on vigilance to that.
Well, hopefully they'll see that we're doing this and maybe it'll put a, put a hold on what, you know, watch this or see this or see it in the paper of why, when, and how. And hopefully the newspaper and the TV will cover it, why we did this, um, just to make sure we cover all our bases and maybe that'll help.
Thanks, Veronica, for bringing that up.
Thanks, Veronica.
Okay, Tonti Weaver again. On that point, is there, isn't it possible for this commission to contact the Department of Interior in the state of South Dakota, uh, what, that you did pass this and you would encourage them to do the same? I think that would make sense. Thank you.
It would probably be the Department of Agriculture. That is under interior.
Okay. Okay, we got to be careful when we have talking out in the audience because we got people that zoom in and they, sometimes they don't hear you and they get upset. So.
Good idea, though.
Janet Jensen.
Good morning, commissioners. I do want to thank you for your willingness to consider this moratorium. Basically, some of what I've, I wanted to cover, I think, has been covered in some respects, but I'm just, I think that, you know, in light of the recent elections, in light of what happened with SB 201, which then became referred law 21, um, I suspect that there will be some upcoming legislation, um, that will address some of the terms, the, the definitions, what is eminent domain, what is a common carrier? Um, you know, and I know in, in 2020, NOM introduced and a bill was passed SB 157 that had to do with commissioners and the commissions and how appeals processes, uh, would take place in regards to the people. I think those may be some things that, uh, the legislature may be looking into as well. So until we know some of those answers, I would certainly ask you to, to vote yes on this moratorium. And I do think that we are hearing from other counties, uh, the unintended consequences that have happened from, uh, you know, legislation like SB 157. We're hearing from other counties who have experience. We've heard from Amber Christensen today, uh, you know, homeowners, landowners that have walked this walk. And I think that we should be open to hearing what, what types of ordinances are working, what. what ordinances aren't working, and really consider what would be in the best interest of Pennington County residents. So thank you guys for your time and your service.
Thanks, Janet. Julie Fry Mueller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Julie Fry Mueller. I actually had a bunch of stuff written up, and I don't really think I, you need to rehear everything because Tonchi and Janet and all these other people have done a really good job letting you know. But I guess what I just want to say is, thank you, Commissioner Hancock, for bringing this. And I think it's really important that we all remember that we work for the people. We are to represent the people, and I think they've made their voices very cloudly, very loudly heard on this issue. And again, beating, getting RL 21 killed was a big deal. And this is also, I believe Veronica mentioned something about the federal level. Thank goodness, we have a new administration going in because the Federal Department of Energy was planning the largest massive land grab for solar, wind, all these things. And so I appreciate you guys putting this, hopefully, you all vote and we get it put on hold because what the federal government had planned, hopefully, there will be a stop to that. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Julie. That was the last, is there anybody out there that has a burning desire to share? Sir?
Garm, I thought we could...
Just recognize yourself for the...
I don't know about burning, but I'm Jerry Mater, a neighboring rancher. Again, just up to make a couple of added points. Everybody that's been up here has made most of my points and done a good job. I hadn't thought about the government ground, but Highway 44 and the interstate are kind of the gateway to the Badlands and also the gateway to the Black Hills. And if they put up these wind towers, 200 or 300 feet high, it's going to adversely affect the tourism industry. I just don't think there's any way around it. And a lot of that government ground that Veronica pointed out is within sight of Highway 44 and, I guess, the interstate, too. So that's just, I think, an important point to make. I guess one thing, too, that I was concerned with on these solar farm, the one that's south of New Underwood, they rent that land for $350 an acre. I made this point, I think, at the, at the Planning Commission, but they rent it for $350 an acre for 20 years, so it adds up to $7,000 for the use of that land, when they could probably buy it a lot cheaper. I don't know what it would be, 2,500 an acre or something. And to me, that speaks volumes. It tells me that they don't want to own that land and that they don't have to be responsible for the cleanup if they decide to abandon the project. They can just walk away. And I would assume, from the sounds of it, although they have a decommissioning plan, but it sounds to me like the landowners may be stuck with that. So that would be something that I think we should research going forward in this next year with the moratorium. And it, as Jim Bob pointed out about the taking ag land out of production, that's always a negative result, I think. And in this particular case, the one we're talking about here, next to us, almost all the revenue off of that property will be going out of state. And I think the electricity produced on it will be going out of state, too, from the sounds of it. So it doesn't do the local community very much good at all. Maybe a little bit of tax revenue, and that's about it as far as we can find out so far. But we've got a year to do more research, so I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions, I guess? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Ma'am? Just need to identify yourself for the record when you come up. I knew there'd be some second thoughts after we had some conversations.
Okay. My name is Barb Limberg, and I live in Keystone, South Dakota. And first of all, I'd like to comment to all you, this has actually been quite refreshing today. It didn't used to be like this years ago, did it? Not at all. And so we were in some of those battles with septic systems and things like that. But I had just a couple of comments to make. There's a saying that I really appreciate. It says, "Any enterprise is built on wise planning. It becomes, it becomes strong through common sense, and it profits wonderfully by staying abreast of the facts." And I'm, that's why I can commend you right now. We're in a position where, you know, some of the things that are coming in in this new, modern world that we're living in right now has not been tested and tried. And so many times, communities and people, we get the precautions of what has not been the results of being tested and tried. But by that time, it's far too late. People lose property, people get sick, the government gets involved, and unfortunately, there's so much bureaucracy to it, that the people we lose are very importance of our life essence. Some of these farmers and ranchers, I was a city slicker, married a farmer, so, boy, it was a whole different world. It's a different worlds. And to be able to combine all those type of efforts into families and generations is something that we don't just go from one generation. Each one of us in here are creating a legacy of our own choices. And so I just, I commend again, and I really appreciate you looking at this moratorium and doing the research that is needed. There's sufficient out, the reason they're coming into some of these western states, upper western states, is because we are very naive. And so we don't know if this is a new, somewhat very foreign ground for us. And so the research needs to be there, and the hearing, not to degrade the people who live on these lands and are affected right now, but they're the ones that have things invested. They're great researchers for you. And to give that the time. So thank you for listening to all this and to actually giving the time for the facts and the education that is needed for this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, I'll take the, a time to thank the audience for your respectful behavior. You know, normally when we've had some hot topics, we get some emotional ones, too, and you guys were very respectful, worked together, and you put together a group of people that wanted to speak because you knew the message. So I really appreciate that. So what I'm going to do is, you know, we have emotional, oh.
Can I get one quick comment as well?
You have to come to the podium.
Kirsten Metzl, again, from New Underwood. So something else in addition to this, it's not directly pertaining to the moratorium, but in the Planning Commission process, when they're approving these conditional use permits, their choice is final. So now our only redress is to go through the Circuit Court to appeal it. So I would like you guys to keep that in mind when we're going through these processes and see if there's a way to revise that statute in which you guys would have final say. I think an elected body should have final say and not a Planning Commission of selected people that were not voted for by the public.
Thank you. So my follow-up, my follow-up on that, folks, was the December 3rd meeting, we're going to have that on the agenda for a task force. That's something that they want. So at that time, if you're interested in being on that task force, I'd make a point to be here or send a message in that you're interested, just so they have that. But officially, it's going to be on, it should be on the December 3rd meeting for discussion also, so you can also come back and make comments of what you'd like that committee to work on, so they have an idea, too. I'm sure they would come up and have public meetings to determine that, too. But, so I do want to present that, the task force can address those issues.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
So since you're not always familiar with government or governant for a lot of the ag community, there isn't a lot of love sometimes, take my word for it. I'm okay with that. But what I've liked is, I had discussions, and I'm going to use Justin as an example, Justin Yurk. We had, when we first started this, he's like, "Deb, what about that wind and solar?" I go, "I don't know. What about the wind and solar? I was on the ordinance." And he goes, "Yeah, I'm not really seeing a lot with it, but I'm seeing a couple of things." And I was like, "Okay." And then I started researching. And then Justin started researching, and then Jerry Mater, and then everybody else started sending me and flocking me, I shouldn't say me, Jerry Dur and Travis Laster as well. Jerry Dur as well is like, "We can't do this. We can't have this landscape." And I'm like, looking at him like, "You know, it's a business. What are you trying to stop a business?" And then you start looking into the details. So an ordinance is not set in stone. That's my bottom line. So when people call me and say, "You can't, we can't do anything," and then people like Justin and others were getting discouraged, like, "Okay, Deb, so this guy's going to go through." I said, "Yeah, but we can do other things." So with Jerry and Travis to get that information and say, "Okay, we don't have to stop this. We only, they're grandfathered in, but we can do other things to make that difference." So just because something seems like it's, like it is, I guess, is an ordinance, and you all start freaking out on it, to a certain extent, remember there's other alternatives. Nothing's set in stone until it's final. Does that make sense, as you see? So never give up on what you guys are doing, and you just proved it, which I'm so proud of this community. And you don't go mess, I'll just tell you, eastern part of New Underwood and Wall area, don't go mess with them, because I've been in there twice, a couple of times with Travis, and I could tell you, when you guys are mad, I like the research you do, I like the facts you pull forward, and I like the fight you give in order to make that difference for us, to see what you're trying to have us see. Because, okay, I haven't been in ag, but I've dealt with a lot of the ag people. You have my attitude, which I like. I like the fight on that you guys are saying, "Okay, enough's enough. We believe that some of this is a good idea, but not all of it." We had a thing on the roads as well. And look at the solution you guys brought forward for a highway superintendent who listened, where everybody's like, "He won't listen." He did, and you guys made that difference. So keep doing that. It does make a difference. You're not always going to get your way every time, because some of this stuff is, you know, what it is. But at least we're listening. You can find that solution. This commission obviously has listened to you today. In the future, with the task force and other areas, we do listen to the citizens, some people, as you see from vacation home rentals. Government here is not here to control people and their businesses. It's to see the difference in how it affects other people. When your business affects other people, then we come in and we say, "Okay, maybe we made some mistakes in this area." If it didn't, like the vacation home rental that was brought up, we are not here to say how many people can be in your business and how many other things to detail it. We're just here to give the basics. And even on that ordinance, the Planning Department did an amazing job at that for figuring that out themselves. So they are not set in stone either. They listen to us, and they do listen to you. So remember that when you're wanting to come up and say, "Oh, they're not going to change anything." This crowd has showed you, when you bring a number of people that have those concerns, unfortunately, sometimes it takes that. So thank you for everybody in that community, in that whole area, not just the people here, that support each other in order to make things happen out there. And I'm impressed just by everything that you guys have done, the research that Justin, once I, I was like, "Okay, Justin, find this, find this," because he's better at internet. Jerry Mater, Lindsay, she started bringing up conservation stuff, and I didn't see that point. So then Mr. Dur, Travis, they started bringing in some other things, and then you just sit there and go, "Okay, I never saw this." So it started out, and I'll be up straight with Justin's comments and mine, we didn't think it was that, well, we just don't want to go into somebody's business and tell them what they can't do. And then this is what happens when you do the research. So thank you for all your time and your efforts moving this forward. It wasn't me, it was your team. It wasn't your commissioners, it was your team of people out there. So thank you.
So what I'm going to do is, I want to give each commissioner an opportunity for final comment before I go to the vote. And then after the vote, I'm going to ask for a 10-minute recess, so that way you, the public, can visit with commissioners or whatnot, so.
Chairman, will you read the revised for me? Thank you, sir.
I think with the revised, you just left that out. Scratched off the bottom part?
The last ordained was revised, Mr. Chair.
Ordinance number 741, temporary zoning ordinance regulating utility scale alternative energy... Well, I'll do that after, take comment.
I'll be quiet then, sir. Thank you.
You guys have any final comment before we...
I'm good.
Mr. Drew, you're good? Okay. Wanted to give that, them the same opportunity I gave you. Temporary zoning ordinance regulating utility scale alternative energy in all Pennington County zoning districts. Purpose: Pennington County Board of Commissioners has determined there is a present need to study the impact scale alternative energy systems in all Pennington County zoning districts in order to evaluate whether current zoning regulation reasonably addresses concerns from the public, health, safety, and welfare. Whereas SDCL 11-2-10 authorizes the Board of County Commissioners in the interest of public health, safety, and general welfare to adopt temporary zoning controls for a reasonable period of time in order to study, identify, consider necessary land use regulations. Now therefore be obtained that the Pennington County Board of Commissioners hereby authorize a one-year moratorium on the issuance of any new permits or approval of land uses for proposed utility scale alternative energy systems, including both solar and wind energy systems, regulated under Section 317 of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance in Pennington County zoning districts. The moratorium shall expire on November 18, 2025, unless otherwise extended by law. Any further questions? All in favor of the moratorium?
Mr. Chair, did I miss that you read in the last paragraph, it's further ordained, or did I totally blank out when you...
That's, Holly, that's what we're scratching out, aren't we?
You need to read that, sir.
Oh, sorry. It's supposed to be a highlight, but it looks like scratched.
Sorry, it's highlighted, so you're aware I changed it.
Okay.
There we go. I was confused, that's why I had to ask.
No, good, good point. It is further ordained that Pennington County Board of Commissioners, the provision and adoption of this ordinance shall take effect upon completed publication per SDCL 11-2-10 Approved this 19th day of November, 2024. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'd look for a motion to take a 10-minute recess.
So moved.
Moved by Laster.
Second.
Seconded by Hancock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, we're ready to get back into session. At this time, I'll recognize Mr. Laster.
Mr. Chair, have a motion to reconsider item 11A for clarification?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to reconsider. Any discussion? None? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Motion to adopt ordinance number 741, a temporary zoning ordinance regulating utility scale alternative energy in all Pennington County zoning districts and the corresponding zoning map as it was read in our resolution.
Second.
As the revised...
Oh, as it was read as the ordinance. Sorry, thank you.
Okay. It's been motion made and seconded by Hancock. Any further discussion? Any public comment? None? All...
Mr. Chair, so, so the map just wasn't included in the language? Is that what we're saying?
In the ordinance, yeah.
Original motion.
Okay.
So this is the revised ordinance that we discussed about and approved, but we're just adding that language of the corresponding map along with it. Is everybody clear? Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, that brings us up to items from zoning, and I'd look for a motion to go into the Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Hancock to go into Board of Adjustments. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This brings us up to an appeal from Plan Director's Decision, and this is from Kyle Brown. So Kyle, I will give you the floor. And what I'll do, Kyle, is I'll give you the floor to explain what's going on, and then I'll give the planning staff opportunity, after you're done, to rebuttal. And if any questions from the commission, they can ask you during that, after you're done explaining your side.
Yes, sir. Thank you. For starters, thank you guys for having me here. The reason why I am here today is because a few months ago, I went into planning and zoning and walked up to the counter, and I said, "Hey, I want to build a dog kennel on my property. What do I need to do that? My wife wants to work it. We're going to work with the base, try to get some deployed members' dogs in there, kind of just have our own thing, do a dog kennel. What are the steps that I need to take?" Initially, I was told, "Hey, well, yeah, first step is you got to get a building permit." So went through that process, got the building permit filled out, brought it back, and they're like, "Oh, man, we're doing it in a flood plain, so now we need to get an assessment for the female flood zone." Went, got that. Went, got that done. Uh, came back right before we were about to open, took a loan out, got the building built. We're ready to rock and roll. Right after we voted, actually, we stopped by and said, hey, we're about to open this bad boy up. Is there anything else that we need to get done prior to that? And I was told, oh, well, yeah, if you're doing a dog kennel, you're going to need a conditional use permit. And I was kind of taken back, like, well, what do you mean? This should have been addressed initially when I came in or a while ago. So kind of just bit my tongue, went home, got a phone call immediately. When I pulled into my driveway, hey, we need you to come back because we need to have a meeting and sit down. I'm like, well, can you put me on speaker? Can we just do this over the phone? I don't know what it's regarding. Walked back in, sat down, had a meeting, walked into the office, was told, hey, well, you never told us that it was going to be a business. Um, you're not in the correct zone for that. So I'm sitting there and I'm like, well, what am I supposed to do? I've already taken a loan out for this building, had it built. This should have been identified a long time ago. And then in that same sentence was told, yeah, you did tell us that it was going to be for dog boarding. So it's kind of just been a cluster for me and my family. We've been trying to figure out what is the process for moving forward. And so then we went back that same evening, had a meeting with Brittany and Jason. And they, they were helpful, told us, hey, the only way that we really can move forward with this is for you to petition the board to accept a, I might be getting the verb wrong, a rezoning application, I think is what they called it. Um, because they couldn't accept it based on the parameters of our property and then the zoning requirements therein. But so that, that, that is the basis as to why that I'm here. I mean, I have an empty kennel at home with no dogs in it. And it's not just like some rundown little rinky-dink kennel. I have that thing soundproofed and insulated. Spoken to all my neighbors about it, everybody's on board. They were actually excited. They were coming over because I built the whole interior by hand. They watched it go up and when I told them, hey, well, having some problems with the county right now, trying to get this bad boy going. So I'm here asking you guys, just what, what do I do moving forward? How, how, how can we fix this for me and my family?
Okay. Does anybody have any questions before I let staffs rebut, or give their comments on it?
Um, Chair, so, um, while I'm looking through this, Kyle, is, um, your building permit says no living quarters or commercial use permitted. So when you filled that out, this is your signature, your name on this, um, then that tells me that it's a commercial, you didn't know that you were going to do a commercial business?
No, ma'am. So initially, when I went in with the building permit, the first time, I had filled that out. I walked in and then I was informed that it was going to be in a FEMA flood zone.
Okay.
So I got the stuff for that, got all the information as to what did I need to do and contacted an assessor. Then went back in with a building permit that was not filled out, that I had just filled out the top portion on. And if you look at it, you can see there's two different colors of ink on there.
Right.
The black ink is the stuff that I filled out, the blue ink are what the people with the planning and zoning department filled out. So I didn't put any of that stuff on there.
Okay.
I basically just filled out my property address and my name.
Okay, but when you do a permit.
Yes, ma'am.
And it says right by a stamp, no living quarters or commercial use permitted. That you didn't think at the time that, um, this was going to be a commercial dog, uh, unit? And neither, I think, is the planners'. Plus you talked to one, two, three, four planners.
Yep.
In that time. And, um, I'll be up straight with you, it's suburban residential.
Yep.
That's why it says no living quarters or commercial use permitted. You cannot do commercial in suburban residential. So there's no way, I'll just tell you up straight, even me as a commissioner, would let you put a dog kennel, a commercial dog kennel with dark, barking dogs in that small of area. If you had a couple of dogs and maybe they thought you were going to bring some couple peoples in and just, just help them, I get it, sir. But, um, there's no way in suburban residential, I'll just tell you, as a planner or as a commissioner, that I would allow you to have a commercial business with dogs and dog kenneling, um, next door. Because it would be a nuisance, for one thing, if you've ever had people with three or four dogs, let alone a commercial dog kennel. So, um, for me, um, I feel bad for you that you built it. But it also, I would have read my permit, uh, no quarters or commercial use. Plus in suburban, it's, looks like it's been told over and over again, um, that, um, you cannot have a dog kennel, commercial business in suburban residential. So, um, I know enough. And then, and also when, it looks like they met with you again many times at the desk. And some of it, um, maybe, um, you felt when you did like the FEMA test and different stuff, that you didn't need that. But those are things that is their responsibility to tell you have to do. Building stuff in the flood plain or the flood, floodway, even the flood plain, but floodway. And then, like I said, I could tell you, if four different, um, planners saw this again, sir, there's no way they would have permitted you to do a dog kennel. No matter how many times you would have asked for it or asked for it from the planning with a conditional use permit, I can truly say they're not going to let you do a commercial dog kennel business in suburban residential. So, um, to be up straight to you, sir.
I, I do, I do understand that, ma'am. And I, and I understand that now in the context of what happened. But somewhere along the lines with me going in there and me explaining to them what I was going to do, it should have been identified sooner. It should have been, I should have been told, hey, well, you can't do that. And then this ball would have never started rolling. I would have never taken out the loan, I would have never built the building, I would have never done any of that. I'm a firefighter, I tear down walls most of the time. I don't ever put them up. I go and I talk to professionals and try to figure out how to do that. And that's what I did. I leaned on the planning and zoning people and I explained to them what I wanted to do. And I was under the impression that it was okay, until we were done.
So let me ask you something.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, most people, um, are they going to let somebody do a dog kenneling right next door to him?
It's not near anybody. Like, we have just under four acres on our property. The adjacent property to ours is owned by her uncle. We're under a lease for it because there's some leans on the property. We built it in an area to where it would not disturb people.
Okay, but that area can be in suburban en- suburban residential area can be cut down to what? One acre? So people can, in that area can sell that and be around you with one acre lots right next to a dog kenneling. So it's not just, that's why they have zoning? That's why they wouldn't let you do it in suburban. Um, four acres probably didn't, um, bother them at first until they saw the suburban and said, okay, that's why you have to have a conditional use permit. And I'll just tell you, they're not allowed, CUPs for dog kenneling are not allowed in suburban residential. So it's not for me to be able to say that, um, I could let you do that anyway because, you know, I like helping people and doing the right thing as well. But, um, legally, we can't do that.
Okay.
So just, just telling you that straight up.
No, I, I completely understand that and I understand why those laws are, are in place. Because it's not just about me and my dog kennel, right? It's about the people who live around me. And I, I completely do understand that. So with that being said, though, being that there is distance, would we be able to maybe propose the rezoning of my property in the event that I send out certified mail to all my neighbors? And if there's any objections, then we can.
Um, I, I can't answer that today, but, um, you certainly can ask and they can relate that to, um, the area. But also it's suburban residential area, it's not just your property. Okay, sir, thank you.
Mr. K- K- Chia, could you answer that real quick, Brittany? Just so we have an understanding of, we know where we're at right now. And he, if he wanted to rezone or move forward with what he's got, what would have to be accomplished?
Um, Commissioners, Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. And we did discuss this with Mr. Brown and his wife. Um, the area around it is predominantly residential. So even going to a different district, um, would be, you still have residential use all, all around. Um, it is off a country road. Um, and Jason and I did speak with him about this. There just really isn't an appropriate way to do it. Um, there is residential. I'm trying to see if there's a map in here.
Because I think with the problem with, with the country road is, is you have open space, then you have condensed. And as Ms. Hagcock says, the way it's zoned, it, it's, it's going to fill up eventually within the next 10, 15 years or 20. So I understand that part.
Mr. Chairman, while she's up there, can I get a clarifying question? Let, let me just ask a question just for clarification of setbacks. If, if there, I'm just going to make an assumption that there was some miscommunication at this point when I asked this question. For a kennel, what would the setbacks be, Brittany? Because I know there's other kennels around.
Right, and the setbacks would be whatever the zoning district is. The other kennels that are around are in agriculture district and they're on significantly larger parcels.
Larger parts, okay.
And they're surrounded by agriculture.
Right. And while she's looking that up, can I ask one question to the applicant?
More than welcome.
Are y'all currently operating a business there? Yes or no? And if you, what's the name of the business going to be if you get this through?
So it's a dog kennel, we're calling it Mother Puppers Boarding. Um, it's currently not being operated. I mean, I've got the interior pretty much finished. We kind of put a standstill on it when this came down because we were like, well, we really don't want to put any more money into this in the event that.
Are you going to take down the website? Because I, whenever I did my research on this, I did notice that there is a website associated with that address and saying you got openings now. So I just want to ask.
Oh, no, we took down the booking and all that stuff. So there's, it's not open, it's not operating, it is not going. We did build the website three weeks, a while ago, when we were in the preparation phase. But everything's been at a standstill. Like, if you go to the website now and you go look, there's no ability to book. Took it all off of there. And you guys are more than welcome to come out and look at it. We're not doing anything sketchy.
That's fair. I did look it up, it's nothing to book.
You can't, you can't do anything, it's frozen right now.
So this is the current zoning, um, in the area. This brown is a suburban residential. Um, if you do recall, um, not in the recent, probably end of last year, beginning of this year, these lots, they're subdividing these and converting them to suburban residential. So that tends to be the, um, changes that they're making in that areas for residential use, so.
My, my comment, Kyle, is I, I've got a brother-in-law who runs a kennel. And I've actually helped him finish the insides of it. So I got to, you know, firsthand what he has, you know, separate areas for each dog. He has the drainage for them, you know? These are questions that would have been asked if they knew exactly what it was used for, for commercial use, to house friends' dogs or so much, or someone else's, I believe. I think there was probably some miscommunication to the extent of what it was going to be, actually be. I, I mean, how many dogs did you plan on, uh, boarding?
So there's six kennels right now that are finished. There is room for me to put more, but I haven't, I haven't done it. We're, like I said, I'm still.
That on one side and then you do six on the other side?
Well, the other side just has, like, I was going to put her utility stuff over there for like, if she wanted to groom dogs or whatever.
Yeah. Because to do that many, I, I, there is some standards that need to be set. I mean, if you go to, uh, the shelter, they, well, I'm sure you did. I think you went to them and found out, you know, what's, some of the, those are additional requirements to house animals. But I, I just think there was some probably miscommunication. You may have said dog kennel and shop, garage. And then that's how they took to get, get you where you needed to go to build it. Because it was also in the flood plain, which created more havoc for you. Uh, and then at the end, so I'm tending to, you know, lean with the staff. Because I've seen all the reports, there's been about, you've contacted about everybody you could contact. And I'm not saying anybody's lying or anything, I just think there was some miscommunication on that part. And I'm bound by myself personally, by the, uh, property owners around you. I mean, that's the zoning that's set up around there and that's what, what we need to follow. You know? You're, you're taking the step to come to the board of adjustments because you're appealing it. This is your time to make your case to see if the commission wants to do that. But I'm telling you, as one commissioner, I, I can't. So.
Can.
Unless you've got some other, more information than what you provided in our packet and would have, have received.
I mean, where the kennel is located, it's not next to anybody. I mean, if you go down the street, there's another fully operational dog kennel less than a mile from where I live. And I understand that the zoning that's set there and it's forecasted for the future of what we want to see with Pennington County. But what about what I want to see with my own property? My neighbors aren't close. And I've spoken to all of them. Anybody within earshot knows what I'm doing. They were excited about it. And I understand that it's your job as the board to enforce the law. But the people ultimately are the one, the ones that it's going to affect, right? My neighbors. So why can't I send them certified letters and allow, and allow them the opportunity to dispute it? And in the event that they don't, then we can, I can, I can bite that bullet. If it's not good for my neighbors and it's not good for me, and I understand that, but let them decide.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
If it was an allowed use, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brittany, this is not an allowed use in suburban residential. If it was an allowed use and you were making a notification to do that, then the neighbors do get a say, or at least get to come in and say how that may or may not impact them. But this is something that's already written in our ordinance that's not a, an allowed use. And people make home purchase decisions based on that. We've, we've had many occasions where individuals will come here and they fight something because it's either something they didn't expect that could be in the particular area that was zoned that way. Uh, they misunderstood the zoning. We've had a lot of battles like that. The ones that make it very clear is when something's not allowed to be in a particular zoning area and someone's saying, hey, I want to do this. Those are the easiest ones because it's not allowed. And then you're asking for it to be allowed. But it's something that we don't have a, a, unless we significantly uproot our ordinance, we don't have a process for that.
I do understand that, but just like she said earlier, right? Ordinances aren't always final. It's not final until it's final.
Correct. The citizens actually can lead to change the ordinances. There's, there's a, a citizen-led, um, drive that you can actually request a change of the ordinance and you can actually do that and, and have that added to that particular, uh, zoning, um, category, if you would like. But that, there is a citizen's initiated measure. You saw all those citizens that were in here? They initiated what they wanted in that ordinance. And so that, that, that's kind of how it works. It's, you're right, nothing's set in stone, but there is a process. If you want to change your ordinance, you can do that, but you have to go through a process to change it.
I don't, I don't think that this dictates a change in the ordinance, though, like.
If it's not allowed, I think it does.
Is that, would that be the route that I have to take then? I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm not super familiar with all these processes. I'm here as a citizen trying to figure out what to do, right? So.
Right.
I mean, I will do whatever you guys propose I should do to make this happen. Because, I mean, she separated from her job for this. We were, we went all in on this bad boy. And now we're getting told, well, sorry.
Mr. Chair, if I can follow up with that. I see your application here. Did you submit this application?
Which one is it, sir?
Uh, I'll just, you submitted that application? You put it, you filled out everything or you talked to someone?
When I did all this, none of this was right here. And I think that's like a retype up of what I did submit.
We got to be careful because we can't hear you on the speakers.
Yeah, you got to talk in there.
So that is like a retype up of what I did submit. The one that I submitted was a handwritten copy on a piece of paper. That's what I submitted.
But they wouldn't have been able to put page.
Hold on, hold on, yeah.
I'll just kind of give you generally the process of how this goes in our office. So this is the, um, building permit application that is reviewed by our office when a citizen comes in, um, and requests a building permit. Uh, one of the things to note on here, um, if the planner that took in, uh, this building permit, which she is in the audience, if you have questions, um, if there was an indication of a commercial use, it would have been a commercial building permit application and not a residential building permit application. Um, one of the other things, yes, the items in blue are from the planners that reviewed the building permit application. Um, that is our building inspector. He does review all of the building, uh, applications. So he did add areas in this blue, um, that were not filled in completely. Um, however, another thing to note is that this, um, site plan was written by Mr. Brown. And this was the proposed new building. There wasn't any indication on it that it was going to be a commercial kennel or anything. So Jason does do the review of the building permits and he does sign off on them. Um, so he was not aware of that there was going to be. So when all of that is done, we enter it into the computer and this is printed out. Um, so if you look up here, it shows you which planner did take this. There was flood plain on the property, hence why there was a flood plain, um, application. So when we look at the application, we go over this with the individual and then they initial the information that's on here. Um, and he had indicated that it was going to be a 25 by 35 detached shed. Again, there was no indication of any commercial use. Um, when Jason does sign this and send this out, um, this is all very common, especially in a residential district, that we put this on every, um, building permit.
Was that stamped on there or is that, is that put on?
Yes, it's put on, it's like a stick, sticker.
The paid part.
Pardon?
The paid part.
No, the living, no living quarters.
This, this, this is something that's put on by, um, the approval person. This, this, this is something that's put on by um the approval person. So Jason or I are usually typically the ones that sign the building permit applications. Um, and so this pink copy, this is printed out in pink um and sent to the applicant showing that the building permit's approved.
So you send him that document that has the paid on it?
And, and it's in a bright pink.
In a bright pink to him and it's got that no living quarters and the paid stamp.
Yes, and um we have a tracker. So um we track where these building permits are in the process. So whose desk gets on, um, who looks at it. So uh when Jason signs these and gets them all, he puts them in a folder and then our admin, um, she sends all of these out and updates the tracker. So on that day, there were several other building permits sent out. Um, so we have not received any information that nobody else had received their applications. In addition, um, our building inspector will sometimes contact the owners directly and let them know that their building permits were approved and to expect this in the mail. But all of these are always mailed to the applicants. So it would have been mailed to this address. So the pink copy is what's supposed to be posted um when they get for construction. So.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I do.
So Brittany. So Kyle now has a building uh that's basically completed that he can't use for the purpose that he originally designed. But is there any other options for him of, of trying to make that uh so it can be used for that kennel? Do you have any suggestions to him as to how he could go about that?
Um, the only suggestion was to come here in front of this board because then for our ordinances in suburban residential, commercial uses are not allowed in suburban residential. If we do set that precedence, then then we'll have commercial uses. And it, we looked at it from a neighborhood commercial. We looked at it from a home occupation. We looked at it from every angle that we could to see how it could fit. And it just doesn't, unfortunately.
Doesn't fit the home operation one.
Home occupation or um neighborhood commercial.
Is there any further questions?
Here.
Hagcock.
So when we had a conversation um David, he had a conversation. Mr. Brown mentioned that the need for the shed and for kenneling dogs and helping friends that US Air Force with their dogs. At no time this conversation did Mr. Brown mention commercial user charging people to house dogs. So you actually had a guy that came out as well that's an inspector to ask you questions personally to see if you were going to kennel dogs. At any time, I guess what I'm saying is, at any time you, you came on November fourth and you wanted to operate a dog kennel boarding business, but by that time you've, you've went through a process that at that point, they didn't know you were doing a commercial business, sir.
No ma'am, that's false. If you would like to pull the tapes because it's being recorded at that counter, then you can go back and look at the tapes. But on multiple occasions, I did tell them that it was going to be a business on multiple, multiple, multiple occasions, particularly the time when I found out that I had to get a FEMA flood plane analysis. I told them, hey, this is going to be a business.
Can I tell you something? Can I tell you something?
Yes, ma'am.
There's no way four of them told you that. If one made a mistake, I see it, but four people
Video evidence.
knew that and saw your building. And I'm going to tell you, um, I know mistakes.
Understandably.
Kyle, I know mistakes happen, okay?
Yeah.
Not saying you're lying.
I know I.
You know what? This process is hard and I, I've been through this process. That's why I'm in government. So I'm not saying you're, you're a bad guy or whatever, but um I'm saying that they thought it was a residential. They thought you were going to help out some people. And um at that time, if the minute one of those four, I'll just tell you from working the counter and having to meet with people behind the counter, and I'm pretty sure all these commissioners as well, that if we knew at any time, and they did, that it was a business for kenneling, it would have stopped the process right there. The minute you would have told them, if they understood what you were talking about, Kyle, there's no way they would have let you move forward.
Ma'am, I have a recording of one of the employees there telling me that I told them that it was going to be for dog boarding.
So if one made a mistake because they didn't know all the information, that's different.
It's on the cameras. There are tapes that are being recorded. If you guys were to go and back and rewind and listen to me standing at that counter, I promise you that you would hear me telling them that it's going to be a dog boarding facility.
Here's the second part. You filled out a residential building permit. Um, so that tells me something and that could be a mistake.
Know what I'm doing with that process, like I stated.
At that point, okay, I, I got that. So like I said, there could be mistakes. But the bottom line we're trying to tell you as commissioners today and the planning department probably was trying to tell you is legally we cannot put a dog kenneling business in suburban residential.
Understandable.
And the ordinances can be changed as you see, but at this time, the ordinance says that. So we cannot legally, as commissioners, let you do what you want to do on this property. Commissioner Drews is trying to help you and it, any of us would try to help you because you built a building.
Yeah.
And we have before. But in this case, we legally can't do it, Kyle, is what we're trying to tell you.
So.
Not that you did anything wrong and they, they miscommunicated or did whatever. Bottom line is today, we can't, we can't do this permit, Kyle, because um it's not legal to put a dog kenneling.
I completely understand that, ma'am. And I, I completely understand it. So with that being said then, from the board, like what should I do next? How do I go about moving forward with this process? Do I pursue the change of the ordinance? Like I?
You want me to be up straight?
Please do.
Okay, even with the ag communities and stuff and them putting dog kennels in their area and being on the commission and politics seventeen years, your dog kenneling business will cause issues in those areas because eventually um the noise factor. I'll just tell you. The smell factor, whatever, even if you're perfect. Um, so we um, I would tell you that in the area eventually, um, even if it was the three acres at that time, uh, you would probably have some major issues. So that's why they do it in ag. So we can't just have you change the ordinance to ag right in the middle of suburban residential. I'll be up straight. That, that I'm going to say it from my personal opinion, that, that's, that's not going to happen.
But not even for me?
Well, you're very, and you're very nice. And I, I met um your
I'm just trying to figure it out, ma'am.
Pat Roslin who's just trying to help and I, I, I felt bad. And we do, we feel bad when we can't help you, but we also have to, we can't do it for you and then do it, then ten other people can come in and put their dog kennels right next to other people.
I get it. I just, what, what's?
So it's not personal for you, sir. It's the law.
So we, if you're looking for what to do next, he'd have to do a comprehensive plan, rezone to try to, I'm just throwing that out because that's something.
Right. Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. So yeah, we discussed that option uh with Mr. Brown and his wife that day that he was in the office. Um, uh, the, the surrounding zoning just doesn't fit. Um, to put a commercial zoning district right in the middle of a suburban residential is spot zoning and that wouldn't be something that we'd be able to support.
So you're thinking that that's an option for him, but he, he'd probably be wasting money.
I would not advise it. We'd have to recommend denial just because it doesn't fit.
Yeah. So I think you may have heard the rezone or, you know, exception for the conditional use permit. Any further questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Well, he already paid a building permit. So he's already paid for the permit for this building to be built. So he can use it as a storage shed or he can use it in that manner. He just can't use it as a commercial kennel. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that he at least understands that. At least there's not a bite to this where you built. Some people come in and they build something and then they come and they try to ask for forgiveness later and they get hit with a bigger bill than anticipated because they have to pay double the, the cost of the building permit and some things of that nature.
I tried to do everything right.
Also, you also can look into what's a nuisance and how many dogs you can have in suburban residential. And um you can't make it a business, but if you want to help people out, you might want to look into that, by the way, Kyle, just in case.
Yes, ma'am.
So Kyle, you got two options. I think, you know, we, we are missing one commissioner. It takes a super majority on uh appeal process. So it means all four commissioners would have to either yea or nay. So with that being said, you have the option that you can continue to the next meeting till the other commissioners hear or you can move forward with the vote and, and the decision with the, the board on.
I would like the, the option to postpone till the next meeting if I can do that. Maybe I have the opportunity to maybe get a little bit more evidence, talk to some neighbors, have them come in. Would that make a difference? She's looking at me like, don't even try it.
Well, and like I said.
Whatever you want, Kyle. I'm just saying legally.
I, I throw that out as an option because it does take a super majority. So that is an option. You're the applicant. And if you want to continue to the next meeting, you can, you think that something's going to change between now and that. You, you read this board.
Yeah.
So I don't want to put anything on you, but I just wanted to give you that option. You do have that.
Chair, he also needs to have all votes today, all four if I'm correct.
That's what I just.
And next week, um, just so he has a true understanding, not that you didn't explain it right, sir. If not, if you have two people on the next meeting against you, um, then it fails. So today you need all of our votes. And then next time you're going to need everybody except you'll need four votes up here. So if you have two against you.
Four votes, none of the, regardless, I would require four votes, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got a better percentage with another person.
Depends how many people um.
I, I, I appreciate you guys hearing me out. And I, and I understand that you guys are bound by what is right as per the zoning ordinances and the laws that are in place. Like I, I completely understand that. I'm all about structure. I was in the military for a long time, but it's just, I find myself in a very cruddy situation.
It is.
Very persistent.
And I'm trying to figure out how to go up instead of be stuck. So I mean, I think that it would behoove of me to wait until the next meeting, being that there will be another person and maybe in between now and then, I can do a little bit more research, digging around and figure out if there is any other avenue or thing that we can do to maybe do this, even if I have to limit it to two or three dogs at a time. But if there's another avenue in which I can do this because this is what she wanted to do. It's her dream. So we got to make it happen.
So your request is to continue to the December third, third meeting?
Yes, sir.
That'd be my motion.
Moved by Hagcock to continue to December third.
Second.
Seconded by Laster. Any further discussion? None. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
That gives you a couple more weeks to, to work some stuff out.
Hopefully figure something out. I appreciate you guys.
Yep. You done with that one?
Yeah.
Moved to come out of Board of Adjustment?
Second.
Moved to adjourn from Board of Adjustments by Hagcock, seconded by Laster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, it brings us up to item thirteen, items from Chair or Commission members. Is there any items need to be brought up?
Miss.
Chair.
Please, Hag.
I talked to Brittany and um we're thinking that with Holly and Brittany, they, we could form a letter to send that we are putting a moratorium on um and uh utility size um solar and wind projects. And if they, I don't know how we want to word it. Brittany, you might have to help me word what we need to put on the letter if we want to send it to other counties. And what that would look like.
Uh, Commissioner Hagcock, um, one of the things too that we may want to do is send it to the PUC, um, maybe some surrounding counties, um, state, federal BLM. And just to give them a heads up that this is what we're doing. Um, one of the other things to note, and I didn't get a chance to say it during then, um, if they are doing um projects on BLM lands or other federal and state lands, typically they have a period where we can comment, period, comment on those. Um, so it may be something where our office and the commission office need to pay attention to that we can bring to you to comment on those. Um, if something like that is actually coming forward.
So I, I would think this would be coming from her department. This is for.
Yes, sir. Not from me.
So informational that that's what you're going to do, right?
Yes. Thank you. She's doing the work.
Thank you, Brittany and Jason.
Anything else for that?
Miss.
Mr. Laster.
Not, not on that particular one, but I was just going to bring up another um topic. Um, Sadida. And uh whenever I was at that, I may have already said this, so I can't remember if I said it or not, but the public um town hall, Sadida, um, not Sadida, Rita Krebs from the base, um, who's leading that project from the base and they, and whatnot, has requested that I would be a part of that town hall and hosting it. I did tell her, and she knows that I'm not going to be part of the commission at that time. I did say I was willing to be a part of that if they so desire, but it also would have to be the commission's decision if they would want me to be in, involved in that level of being um facilitating that meeting as well. So I'm open to it, but just want to put it on your calendar and y'all's mindset for y'all to have a discussion when the new commission gets on board of who wants to be a part of, of um uh running that meeting if, if one of the commissioners wants to, if they want me to be running that committee as I have in the last few years, so.
But that's not between now and the first of the year, is it?
No, it's in March.
So, yeah, you got time to address the new commission when.
Yep.
Anything else? And I'm just going to read into record what we have underneath there from items from Chair and Commission members. It's an, it's a time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns to the full board. Official action will not be taken on any item brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bring back items back before the board for future considerations. Okay, so that brings us up to meetings and committee reports. Travis.
All right. Uh, Central States Fair Board, we talked about um getting ready for the stock show. It's in, you know, it's coming up in January, so last, you know, all the work on that. And I can't tell you any of the concerts or anything of that nature, but they've got some stuff squared away for that. Uh, and their December meeting has changed to December sixteenth. That's their Christmas party meeting as well. Outside of that, um, they're just running pretty ti- at a tight ship right now due to their, you know, the contract and getting ready for the, for the uh stock show and rodeo. Uh, Building Committee, you heard the majority of what we talked about in that meeting, which was the um uh, the statue, that justice statue and uh the jail update. And then the Extension Advisory Board was last night. Um, they're looking for a new director because the, the one that's there is, is not going to be there much longer. Uh, I think the one that's actually filling in is only doing about five hours, um, just to make sure that they're doing all their um 4H paperwork. They mentioned something about if they were gone, then you would have to do all that work. So that she's standing on to make sure that Holly's office didn't have to pick up the uh, the work that she's doing. Uh, they're, they're actively looking. And then they updated on all our summer events that they did. And outside of that, uh, nothing else to report on the, on that one. I also was on that one via Zoom and I had a bad connection, so I didn't hear everything, but it didn't seem like there was anything major going on um that needed to be brought forward. And then outside of that, you know, we were at, I think all of us was all, were all of us at the firefighter recognition? I think I remember seeing all of us there. So uh, that was a pretty, pretty neat event there at the fairgrounds in the Gen Pro building. So I, I enjoyed that as well. So outside of that, that's all I had this last couple.
Thanks Travis. Mr. Drews.
Well, I think the uh Planning Commission has pretty well um been handled already. Uh, I did attend the Library Board of Trustees yesterday. Um, that was, they talked about the general operations, uh, the new security system that they have in place over there. It indicate that during this, the course of this last year, that uh wages had increased by sixteen percent, basically like they have for almost everybody. So um, that's all I have. Nothing else.
Thanks, Gary. Mr. Hagcock.
I don't have any. Oh, Fire Service Board.
Thank Val and Gail for a wonderful um program that they put on for the Fire Service Board for their recognitions um of their outstanding uh volunteer firemen. Um, the food was great, the prizes and all the work it takes to do just that one project every year is huge. So thank you to them and all of our volunteer fire departments that, and men and women that put their time and energy in uh to take care of Pennington County.
Thanks. Um, Compensation Committee meeting I wasn't able to make, the WIR Public Land Steering Committee. That was about an hour long meeting and that was pretty much updates on the old growth amendment that had been coming down. Uh, WIR expects that to with the new administration, that that will probably die off. That the committee members' uh biggest discussion was local control. They didn't want to see that work, all that work uh with forest management go to waste because there is some good stuff that could be come, come down from it, but that was their ma- major updates that that they figured that that is not such a hot item anymore. And with the new administration, it, it, it will die off and it will get back to local control, or at least ways there's some committee members who are going to work on that. They did also give us updates of, you know, at that point in time, some of the appointments that Mr. Trump was going to go, administration was going to put in. But uh one of the biggest news that I do have is it came out last week is the SRS funding has been approved. Uh, it's been in limbo for quite a while, but uh it was approved. So that's what was one of the highlights. And I too, you know, at the fires banquet, I think it was very well put together, good turnout, good recognition of our volunteer fire department and the new people that they have. And I think it And I think it went very well, it was well attended. With that, I'll end my report. And that brings us up to vouchers. So I'd look for a motion to approve, a separate motion, to approve the voucher for Roseanne LLC in the amount of $760,000,000,0193.38. Seconded by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, is one abstaining. Second motion would approve the remaining vouchers in the amount of $7,691,193.38.
So moved.
Moved, Lassiter. Seconded by La Croix. Any discussion, any public comment? None, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have executive session STCL 125-2 for Personnel Matters per 125-2-1 Annual Department Head Review and our contractual pending litigation per 125-2-3 and our emergency planning per 125-2-6, subparts A, B, C, and H to discuss the protection of public property. Look for a motion for executive session.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded to go in executive session, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Discussion, please.
Go ahead.
On the reclasses for the sheriff, I don't need to be in there. I already read the information, if that's okay, on that. And yeah, those two.
Just those two?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And which was the other one? I didn't hear the...
Reclassification.
Of the two individuals?
Yeah.
That's the only one?
Timothy and Austin.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Look for a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. I'd make a motion to approve Timothy Montgomery be placed as detox tech 1 at B-22, step 6, 21, 48-hour effective November 10, 2024.
Second. Third.
Mr. Chair. You didn't make a vote for coming out of executive session.
All in favor of coming out of executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now I'd make that motion to move Timothy Montgomery to be placed as a detox tech 1 at B-22, step 6, 21, 48-hour effective November 10, 2024.
Second.
Moved by La Croix, seconded by Lassiter, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Number two would be moved to approve, I would move to approve Austin Sorensen to be placed as the correctional officer 1, C1, step 1, 21, 53-hour effective November 10, 2024.
Second.
Moved by La Croix, seconded by Lassiter, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
Chair, I have a discussion.
There's no discussion on adjournment. Once a motion on adjournment, there's no discussion. The motion's been made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Have it at the next meeting then.
Yeah, you can.
Thank you.